Okay, welcome everybody. We're gonna get started. So I would like to call the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee to order.
And I'd like to call the Concord School Committee meeting to order.
And just for the notes, we have all members are present and we do not have our Mecca representatives here. So we're gonna, we have a few things going on tonight. So we've moved the kids till after, oh, sorry. My camera is on, thank you. Thank you. A few concerts and things happening tonight. So we're gonna start off with public comment. So just as a reminder, this is, uh, we're gonna start with public comment in the room and then we'll also go on to Zoom. So we'll go every other one in the room, one on Zoom. And as a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public. So the school committee will not be responding to any comments. You will have a time limit of three minutes. So if you can state your name and address for the minutes, you can come on up if you have public comment. This mic? Okay, great. Monica Granfield, 110 Carlisle Pine Drive, Carlisle. "I'm here tonight in disbelief that I must advocate against the American Library Association and their willingness to expose minors to pornographic content that is being shelved in the high school library. This is not about prejudice, it's about crossing an insidious and sinister line with naive complacence in the face of a world with Jeffrey Epstein's and Ghislaine Maxwell's. The depravity of the content is grooming in that it normalizes teen prostitution, incest, assault, dangerous anal sex, pedophilia, the use of pornography, and promotion of promiscuous sex. This threatens and harms our kids by assaulting them with unhealthy ideas and creates an intimidating and hostile environment that can be considered sexual harassment and not a safe place for kids. Parents have never been notified of this explicit content as stated under the Mass Parental Notification Law, Chapter 71, Section 32A. Pornography is addictive, it produces habituation and sexual dissatisfaction, the use of it leads to a higher likelihood of contracting an STD. It presents sexual access as a sporting event that amounts to innocent fun with inconsequential effects on emotions, perceptions, and health. Where males and females do not believe that exposure to pornography has any effect upon their personal views or lives, they may more readily internalize abnormal sexual attitudes and increase the likelihood that they will engage in perverse sexual behavior, see footnotes. The Supreme Court has never said that the school libraries have a right to present obscene materials to a minor if it's capsulized into a larger work. A work is pornographic if it has porn in it, the percentage does not matter." And I am gonna quote from Boys Aren't Blue, and you might wanna turn your mics off or your sound off if you, but mine are present. "You were fully erect at this point, I was nervous, we're gonna get in trouble, you can't tell anybody, okay? You then grabbed my hand and made me touch it, it was the first time I'd ever touched a penis that wasn't my own. I knew what was happening wasn't supposed to happen, cousins weren't supposed to do these things with cousins. By now we were touching each other, they used it in front of me, fully erect, and said, taste it. At first I laughed and refused, but then you said, come on, Matt, taste it, this is what other boys like to do. When we touch each other, we both put his hands around me and moved down to touch my genitals. I didn't know who was behind me, but I knew I was being violated, he reached his hand down and pulled out my dick." From Tricks by Ellen Hopkins, graphically describes children working in prostitution. "Iris worked at a cat house making money, her usual way. While a regular paying customer had an appetite for younger meat, I totally wanted to pop you a cherry. You were my first version, you were probably, won't be my last, because, sorry, but virgin sex really isn't good, fuck you. Already paid $200 for a good time with you, he's on me, yanking my hair, pushing me to my knees, he flips me over, you're even prettier from behind, you know that? Don't, useless to plead, useless to fight, he yanks down my shorts in a single swift motion, he's on me, humiliating me in every possible way, as promised, he's rough, biting, pounding, shredding. You're failing our black communities by providing books with pornography and incest, demeaning and objectifying young women by offering them books on prostitution, it's maleficent, and is this the best that we can do? I ask you to please revisit the book review process to ensure that all voices are heard, review the criteria for what is an acceptable book, awards a meaningless criteria, provide accurate and thorough descriptions of books to parents, and allow parents to opt their children in to be accessed to these books, thus giving book choices that align with these families' values, be kind and stop the harm." Thank you. Okay, I'm just gonna look online. If you are online and you have a comment, please raise your hand, use the raise hand feature.
These are just two of the several many, many books in our life.
Okay, it looks like we have a comment online. Erin Fife, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Erin Fife, 174 Hill Street in Concord. And I just wanted to take a moment and thank the school committee and the superintendent and our district for all the work they're doing with the Celtics Playbook Initiative. I'm excited to hear more about that tonight and the recognition. I think it's incredibly important that we support the social emotional learning of our students, and that includes many different supports. And I think the district is doing a fantastic job in making that a priority for our students, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I look forward to hearing more about that and supporting the district as we expand that work throughout the district and the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go back to the room. If anyone in the room has public comment, please join us at the table. State your name and address, and as a reminder, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Susan, I'm from Farah. We all know, and I, as a retired librarian myself, surely do understand the immense role a school library may play in improving the students' learning and knowledge. Are you aware of any scientific studies showing the positive correlation between enhanced learning and education on one hand, and sex education in the curriculum with easy access to pornographic books in the school library on the other? Please let me know if there is and where I can get access to it for as a taxpayer and retired librarian. I am very curious it for no other but for professional reasons. If there are no such studies, then how do you justify the availability of such material to our students? Material that would make the streetwalkers in the combat zone blush? Do you plan to release such study to the parents and taxpayers? If yes, when and how? And if not, why not? I also would like to get access to any and all teaching material you are using on sex education and gender ideology education in every class and every level. Here is my email address. Please send me them the next three days. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to our Zoom audience, and if you have a comment, please use the raise hand feature, or you can just show your screen. Okay, having seen none, anyone else in the room? Again, please name and address, and as a reminder, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Robert Tagory, I'm from Carlisle, 80 Wildwood Drive. As a Carlisle taxpayer, I congratulate all the teachers, the administration, and the joint school committee for our well-deserved mention of getting to 31st place in the rankings. And I say this from the very bottom of my heart. In the school library, there's a popular book written for teenagers, slightly according to the flowers and roses, opening randomly near its On page 246, we find the following poetic description of two young people in the throes of passion, à la Romeo and Juliet. Quote, "He growled softly and deathly flipped us over, spreading me beneath him, etc. And also the claw retracted and his kiss deepened, and his fingers slid between my legs, coaxing and teasing, etc." I congratulate the librarians for their selection of this book, and here I shall discuss how such fine literature can improve the general level of education along with the current MCAS and similar test results. Let me elaborate. For example, the number 246 is the product of 2, 3, and 41. Right here, the mathematics teacher that can introduce the concept of prime numbers without fear of losing the students in deep sleep. Also, this hands-on mathematical education could be combined with giving them homework to use their fingers to count the number of definite and indefinite articles on a strictly non-discriminatory basis, a variable synergy of mathematics and English grammar. Moving forward, ask those students who identify as male to study these passages and thus further their writing skills for the school newspaper from the point of view of journalistic push and pull, à la Jonathan Toobin, to simultaneously learn about both biological rhythms and fluid mechanics. Then ask the same students to write a fluid essay on these newly acquired skills, or even demonstrate how they will have transgressed their inner inhibitions that might cause them to underperform relative to students, say, in Weston and in Winchester. The teachers could also be part of this age-appropriate live demonstration for students who identify as female. Surely, we have dedicated educators who would eagerly volunteer to be part of this public service without burdening the taxpayers for otherwise well-deserved overtime pay. And finally, regarding LGBTQIA+ in general, and gender dysphoric students specifically, who may have difficulty identifying with these books for its outwardly heteronormative subject matter, the same teachers should strongly express their compassion with inclusivity by teaching that transitions are of natural occurrence, common to all matter everywhere, and is always reversible, such as phase transitions between ice, liquid, and gases water. And this way, we all together can learn about thermodynamics, physical chemistry, climate change, and mutual acceptance without prejudice. For hate has no place here. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
You are welcome to read it.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, thank you, thank you. Actually, we're gonna go back to Zoom, sorry, a hand just popped up. All right, Elizabeth Frank, please state your name and address. You're muted.
Sorry about that, thank you. Elizabeth Frank, I'm at 1283 Elm Street in Concord. Um, and I guess two things. First off, I just also wanted to appreciate what has been going on with the CMS Playbook Initiative, and just really thank that the middle school for what they've been doing, and really encouraging the school district to broaden this into other grades. I know it's happening in ninth grade, but especially thinking about younger students and them being the social and emotional learning and the importance of that, just so that all students can feel a sense of safety which will help them to learn better. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, coming back in the room.
Okay, before I stop my minutes, did some of the parents then would like to give me her minutes? Is that possible, or is something that we don't do?
You, you need to-
Because I have a speech for-
You'll have three minutes. So state your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes.
Three minutes, but the other ones, okay. Carmella G., 328 Border Road in Concord, Mass. This one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we can go in a sec.
All right. Elizabeth, I think you're unmuted still.
Oh, I'm so sorry, thank you. Okay.
Okay, Carmella G., 328 Border Road in Concord, Mass. "Honesty is the best policy. This is what I wrote when I first approached the middle school principal and the superintendent. It has been over two years now when I frantically reached out to this committee to try to make sense of why my child has started learning about gay sexuality as part of her own educational program. It seemed any happened overnight. As the principal explained in one of our many meetings, Christian Herbert and her select panel of the School Committee of Teaching and Learning, he made the choice over the summer to include these books under the pretense of more diversity as part of the new English curriculum. The problem? No parents were included into this decision-making, and no parent's input was obtained while mapping out this crucial decision. Much more to my dismay, the English teacher spent over five months analyzing and cross-examining the Ivy Aberdeen's book to a bunch of 12-years-olds than they were supposed to comprehend and write about over and over again how a young Ivy, 12-years-old herself, hated her mother, father, sister, young twin brothers, and at the end found herself confused and drawn out to a lesbian couple that showed her how to love. Moreover, while experiencing feelings herself, then showed her how to love, another girl, after silently watching her best friend making out in the backseat of a car, she befriends Robin, a transgender black girl from the South, then opens her eyes to a new reality. People are racist, and people are cruel, especially white people from the South. This can be found on page 215 of the book if you're interested. Now you have to tell me, what was the point of this chauvinistic book? Was it intended to disunite people? Or was it intended to make kids believe that they are racist? Or perhaps was it intended to destroy the fundamental ideas of race, gender, and identity, and destroy the idea of the nuclear family? Our superintendent repeatedly sent out emails underlining that CRT was not adopted in our schools. Hence, she stressed the importance of our currently endorsed DEIB five-year plan. Unfortunately, critical race theory is the core for DEIB. In fact, the very center of CRT focuses on preaching the value of equality since it's believed in the American society it's incredibly racist, which is solidifies us diversity, inclusion, and whatever it is, training programs that concentrate on systemic racism and white privilege. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is the new code word for critical race theory. The school board is deliberately trying to hide their curriculum to further devalue morality. Right now, K through 12 is educating children in learning, and then there is something wrong with them, then they should be shameful of their own white race." Can I keep going?
Your three minutes are up, thank you.
Okay, can I, can the other parent come up and give me the minutes?
Can the other parent come up and state their name?
Can, yeah, she can.
And can she read it? Thank you. Just state your name and address, please.
Over here, right now.
Krista Johnson, 58, Shag Bark Road. "Right now, K through 12 is educating children in learning that there's something wrong with them, that they should be shameful in their own white race, that there's racial categories between whiteness and blackness. That, as Robin says to Ivy, white people are racist and homophobic. This new program is teaching our children that everyone can be whoever they want to be and act as they wish without consequence. Our public school system is teaching our kids that it's normal to meow or have multiple pronouns in order to fill this void and confusion that they have created amongst our young generation. Kids have been pushed to jot down their preferred pronouns on every single sheet of paper and online assignments. They've been punished if the task didn't get completed, and yes, this happened to one of Carmella's daughters just last year, when after refusing to put down her pronouns, the teacher marked her work as incomplete and gave her a lower grade. As Albert Einstein once said, "In teaching history, there should be extensive discussion of personalities who benefited mankind through independence of character of judgment. Critical comments by students should be taken in a friendly spirit, restore the values of individuals, stop indoctrinating our children. We need to go back to basics and start teaching our kids again that the process of reading, math, and science and all to be good and successful people."
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, okay, let me just, one more. We have time for one more, because our public comment is 20 minutes. So, online, do we have anyone online?
Yes, I would like to comment, Rachel Freed.
Okay.
Um, yes, hi.
Say your name and address, Rachel, and you have three minutes, and this will be the last public comment.
Okay, thank you, and thank you to all the school committee members who are here today. Um, I'm sorry, I see someone trying to speak.
Yes, Rachel, you're up next. If you could just pause for a minute. So our public comment is 20 minutes, and then we finish our public comment.
We have a public number of people here, we take our time to come to this meeting, and we can't go over.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go back to our public comment online, and we're gonna let her finish. Okay, so if I could ask you to sit down, thank you.
Where does it say you're gonna alter? I didn't see anything in the meeting that said you're gonna alter.
We typically-
That's our custom.
You're people who took the time to tell me.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna ask people in the room if you can just stop what you're doing right now, and online, Rachel Freed, if you can finish your public comment.
Thank you very much, and thank you, members of the school committee. I am a woman of color living in the Carlisle community who will be sending my children to the Carlisle, to the Concord Carlisle Regional Schools in the future. And I just wanna express tremendous thanks and gratitude for the work that you're doing to build belonging in our communities. I am an expert on diversity, equity, and justice education, and I have been doing this in organizations for over a decade. Diversity, equity, and inclusion work is not the same thing as critical race theory. Anyone who has done the research and learning around that should know that. And we need to understand that helping children recognize their own identities is critically important to community health and wellness. And it is also critical to building belonging, love, and acceptance in our communities. I am deeply appalled by what I've heard tonight, and I am extremely of the mindset that schools get to decide what to educate children about. The parents don't get to review curriculum and make determinations. This is why we have educators in the room, this is why we have the leadership of our superintendent. This is why we are learning from best practices in current education. And I appreciate the work of building belonging and helping children understand their identities. As a woman of color who has been discriminated and marginalized not only in this community but in this world, and I am glad that we can finally wake up and see how racism persists in our communities, how discrimination against people because of their sexual orientation and identity is prevalent. So thank you for the work that you are doing. Thank you for your leadership, and I commend you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we are gonna close up public comment right now. As per our policy, it's 20 minutes, and we did state at the beginning we were gonna go back and forth within the room and online.
Take the time to come in. Nothing in your agendas.
Excuse me, it's in our policy, but at the beginning of the meeting, I stated that we were going to go back and forth, but we're not gonna have a meeting with the public right now. So we're gonna move on to our next agenda item. Thank you.
That's not a point. That is not a good point. And you better keep practice, everything you do in your meetings, when you start it, when you finish it, because the open logs-
I'm gonna ask you to please sit down. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to our agenda, and we're gonna go on to our recognitions. So tonight, I believe, oh, sorry, student update, sorry about that. So our students are with us tonight, I saw Harry online. Okay, I think Harry is here.
Yeah, I think Zaria was planning on coming a little bit later, because we were planning on 6:30. So if you wanted to do, if it's possible, do the recognitions first, that might be better.
You know what, actually, we'll go, we'll go on to your update first.
I think that's-
Okay, you know, we'll do, we'll wait on all the students till 6:30, so we'll go on to Dr. Hunter's update. Thank you, sorry about that, Harry.
Yeah, no worries.
All right, thank you, I wanted to provide a few updates tonight. It's a little eclectic, so bear with me, we did that on purpose. There's a few things we wanted to be informative about, and then highlight some of the great things that have happened the last couple of weeks. We did know there was some interest in hearing about bus drivers and the incentives and how we're doing, so I'm gonna ask Bob to give you that update. We're doing the best we can with what we have, is the answer.
So I appreciate the incentive program being approved, that has had an impact, but it's not a panacea. So we have, we've had a driver. We've had multiple drivers express interest. What we're finding is that they're shopping right now, so they're interviewing us, probably more than we're interviewing them. We recently had a driver who just passed the DOT exam and is now driving a route in Concord, so that's a plus, so we're excited that the incentive program helped kind of attract that driver. We are still short drivers, we're still looking for more, we have a couple that have expressed interest. But it's important that we keep the incentive program in place. Just for clarity, like, pretty much everybody has incentives now, so we're not the only one doing that. But I think it's a, it's pretty much a requirement right now with the driver shortage. But the new, the new hire was a big plus, it's helped, and we have, again, a couple of other candidates, but they are shopping and considering us.
Great, thanks.
Uh, other updates, tomorrow night is our second of four strategic planning sessions, so we're really excited. Big shout out to Kristen for all her work to facilitate and organize ahead of time. We've been receiving the visioning data from all the different stakeholders who are participating, so that includes every faculty has done the exercise, we're bringing in the PTG feedback, so that's coming in. The Student Senate met and attracted 40 students in what they hosted, so it's a really wide range. The leadership team had a little time with it this morning, just to be sure we were ready to run our own smaller groups tomorrow. But we're excited to see where it's going, and definite themes are emerging, which is very similar to five years ago. Some more to come on that, and those of you who will be there, we're looking forward to that activity tomorrow, so. Um, I think my other highlights are much reflecting on the week of Thanksgiving. It's such an amazing time, and we've been able to recuperate on the pre-COVID activities that we so loved. So first, just really noting the level of generosity and community service that we are promoting as a school district. And I think that comes from every direction, staff, leadership, parents, kids. One of our biggest partners is OpenTable, so if you followed any of our, our social media or theirs, it's just been a lot of sharing of what we were able to donate, either financially or in actual food donations. And that, the kids are very hands-on with, and I think it's a great learning experience and one of our real strong points as a, as a school district and community. The second part is just bringing back the climate and cultural activities that happened that week. I think I previewed them a little when we last met, and what a really fun week it turned into with three big highlights of things that had really not happened or not happened in the way we had hoped, but that, that changed this week. The Turkey Trotted Alcott, uh, at Thoreau is back. The Turkey Trotted Alcott happened earlier in November, Turkey Trot at Thoreau was back with the assembly prior to, and then the lap around the block. The middle school was able to do a full-blown Maroon and Gold Day, including a game, game show during the morning, and a big assembly that we haven't done in years, and just a lot of fun. And then the high school was able to bring back its spirit assembly, where all of the high school goes into the gymnasium together, which we have not done in three years, so severely fun. Cheerleaders and the athletic teams, and a lot of really goofy games to watch, and music, and really fun environment. The kids were really engaged, and I think just had a great time, so. Really fun to see all that come back. And I think we realize now how much we lose when you don't have it in terms of what school can be, so. And then finally, and I know Sarah does a great job of updating on the Dalton Community Ed, and I'm gonna do this, as Kristen brought it to my attention this week too. They're doing a great job of filling the Center for Parents and Teachers merger, um, so we're gonna be sure to continue to promote the upcoming parent events that are happening mostly in early 2023. Very focused on technology and mental health, and really support to parents on how to manage those, and obviously those are aligned to the strategic planning objectives. And I just thought it worth one more time to note those in public, but also to note that we work collectively as a district with them to be sure those are aligned and to really try to foster the parent, parent piece of the work, so. Exciting work for them, and they really picked that torch up and ran with it, so. So those are some of the highlights, and thank you for a little time to, to give you those.
Great, thank you. Oh, what did I miss? Yes, you have to give the score.
You're right, a lot of great football, Thanksgiving in Lexington, all sorts of great, great activities.
We did win this year, so-
Yes.
Very exciting.
Yes, and, and we broke ground.
Exciting children.
We're gonna break ground and finish the support you had to the Thoreau Accessible Playground that is happening this week. We actually expect that kids will be able to use it next week, and we got it in before the ground froze, which with the supply chain issues was-
Yeah, thank you.
Touchy.
Great.
Thank you, Carrie, for that.
All right, thank you. All right, and now I think we're gonna have Harry with us, and I'm not sure if Zaria and Felicity are with us also, let's see, Zaria.
She can't attend, so it's just Harriet and Zaria.
Hey, welcome.
Yeah, um, thank you so much. So like Dr. Hunter had said, Felicity can't be here tonight, unfortunately, she has a chorus concert, but Zaria and I just have a few quick things we wanted to touch on. Yeah, Zaria, do you wanna get started?
Uh, okay, uh, Spirit Week was a great success, students and staff seemed to enjoy the Spirit Assembly. Uh, I know myself, I have really, I really enjoyed the Spirit Assembly. I even got to get like a really good seat, I was in the commentator box, it was really good, it was really fun.
Yeah, definitely, that was a great success, and a lot of good work from Student Senate on that. And then also, Blood Drive was a really big success, we managed to get, I think, almost 50 people to sign up, which is a really big deal, it's a lot of people, and Boston Children's Hospital was super thankful to have our support.
a really big deal. It's a lot of people and Boston Children's Hospital was super thankful to have our support. And then also Winter Sports has started this past week after break and the first games and meets are starting next week, so that's very exciting.
Uh, the two volunteer activity fair was a good opportunity for students to earn community service hours. I think that happened today. Um, I think it went good, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, again, Chorus is recruit, having a recruiting content for eighth graders tonight. Uh, that's why Felicity isn't here.
Yeah, and then Student Senate has also approved a couple of new clubs in the past few weeks since we've had an update. We now have a knitting and crocheting club, which is going to be donating everything they make to charity, so that's pretty exciting. And then also a chamber music club, which had been operating kind of unofficially for, I think about a year now, but they're now an official club and they're going to be able to perform at a lot of different community events and things like that, so that's great.
Um, everybody feels pretty refreshed after the Thanksgiving break and I know myself included. Um, we're all excited for the winter break and for Christmas.
Yeah, definitely. And then all three of us, including Felicity, are looking forward to the strategic planning session tomorrow. I think it'll be great to share some of the stuff that we gathered, like you had mentioned earlier. We met as a senate and we managed to get like around forty student volunteers of that, so we have a lot of good information to share. So yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you for the update. Anyone have any questions on the table?
Not a question, uh, but I, I would certainly reinforce the idea that the activity fair today was a good one. Um, it was uh, probably as good a one as we've seen in the last five or six years. In no small part because uh, Ned Russe and Terry Smoka and others really supported it nicely. So students knew it was happening. So instead of walking by the tables, the students made a point of coming right over and talking to the different community representatives. Um, we were very pleased.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you for coming, taking time out of your night. And you're welcome to stay as always, or um, if you have homework or something to do, you do that too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, and next up, we have our recognition. So I'll give it to Dr. Hunter to uh, introduce our recognition this week.
Yeah, and I, I want to make sure Mr. Cameron's there to cue us up, but we wanted to bring some of the, there he is, bring some of the Playbook Initiative to you. Um, knowing how much we've spoken on it and highlighted it for you. So Mr. Cameron's here with, I think about eight students who are also zooming in, and I'm going to turn it over to him to get us started.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. So I invite all the Playbook student leaders. Uh, there's a little confusion on the time. Um, so some of them came on at six and may have left. So the ones who are still on, I invite you to turn your cameras on. You can stay muted. And I believe Erin um, is behind the scenes.
Yes.
And I'll share a link. Great. And if Erin, if you could just advance that to the cover, that'd be wonderful. Thank you. So the left. There you go. Thank you. There's a video embedded as well. Um, I do remember the last time I came, the video audio was um, not matched up very well, so we'll see how this goes. Um, so I just want to welcome um, and thank the Superintendent of Schools, the Assistant Superintendent. Um, of course, uh, Andrew, our Director of Equity, Inclusion um, and Belonging uh, for allowing us this opportunity to um, really showcase uh, year five of the playbook being at the middle school. What you're seeing um, either on your screen or on the active board in the school committee room is the um, actual Playbook Initiative Parent Guide. Uh, so the first time in about three years, we actually had an opportunity of an in-person parent meeting to really slow down this urgent and important work, um, and make sure that our parents felt like they were engaged um, in part of this work. Um, and I'm very proud to say we had um, about a hundred and thirty parents who came to this night. Um, it was on Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, I believe. Um, and uh, we also had the opportunity for the Boston poet, um, the Boston poet laureate. Um, her name is Portia. Um, and she not only performed at the very first Boston Celtics game in honor of Bill Russell and his work um, in the social justice arena, but she also came and performed um, and did some readings at our parent night and also for our students because um, during the day that we canceled classes and, and had the playbook in action and the students are going to hear from in just a few minutes. Um, they, the students um, had a such a wonderful opportunity to be in front of the Boston poet laureate as well. Um, Erin, if you could just advance the book. All right, and again, there's a lag on my end, so I think we're just going to test this video and let it run for about fifteen seconds and see how it goes. Yeah, Erin, I don't hear any audio and I think you should already hear audio. Just confirming in the room, you can't hear the audio, the video either?
No. Is there anything we can do, Mark?
With audio.
Oh, it's the, it's the sharing through YouTube, I guess.
Yeah.
So we can go live with fucking
Yeah, let's talk with the kids. We're happy to see them.
And I can see the video after, Justin.
Yep, that's wonderful. If we want to just go through the pages really quickly.
Sure.
This just shares um, a brief history of the playbook at Concord Middle School. Um, year one was two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, um, when we essentially just allowed middle school students to kind of raise their hand um, and be a part of this work. Um, it was an optional uh, place. Um, in year two, which you see on the right-hand page, um, we had a community evening that you see the picture uh, down below on the right-hand side, where we engaged with our school committees, um, school committee members, administration, uh, the police chief, um, the fire chief, um, parents, community members from Boston and from Concord. Um, then if you can advance page. Um, you know, in the COVID era was a little bit more difficult. Um, you see us on Zoom with some of the uh, Boston Celtics players um, engaging in this work. Uh, year three is also where uh, the student voice was um, predominant in an area of can we also run this workshop and this training for the adults? So the pictures you see under year three of twenty twenty-one, you see the bus drivers. Every bus driver um, has engaged in the playbook. And then very proudly, year four, which was last year, was the very first year um, that according to the Boston Celtics and Project Three-Fifty-One, which is an organization that helps sponsor the playbook, um, we were the very first school to actually do the playbook for every single student, every single adult, uh, school-wide, both buildings. Um, and that was spring of last year, which brings us to fall of this year. Um, in the fall of this year, I have uh, some student playbook leaders um, that I invite to really just unmute and share a little bit about. Let's first talk about um, the student learning, student leader training, um, where we partnered with the Concord Free Public Library and one of was, one of the first groups. We had eighty-five playbook student leaders. Um, Erin, you can actually um, tick off the screen sharing. Thank you. Um, we had eighty-five student playbook leaders uh, who were the, one of the first groups to be a part of uh, the Doris Kearns Goodwin Forum that is in part of the new Concord Free Public Library. So I first invite the um, the playbook student leaders, and I apologize, I had more on about a half an hour ago. Um, but we have about five that are still here. Um, so Emmy, I'm actually going to look to you because you're an eighth grader on. Um, and this was not your first year in playbook. Um, and I also would like to introduce Emmy O'Donnell as uh, the Project Three-Fifty-One Eighth Grade Ambassador. Um, and that's important for the school committee to know um, that she is Concord's ambassador uh, to Project Three-Fifty-One. But Emmy, can you talk a little bit about, you're going to need to mute yourself, the student leader training that um, we did at the Concord Free Public Library?
Yeah, um, so this was the first time we've ever had at the library. So we went to the library. You sat down in your groups and at the start, uh, Mr. Cameron asked us all a question. I forget how you worded it. What was the question again, Mr. Cameron? It was
Yep, the icebreaker that we did as student leaders and we ended up doing um, school-wide as well is being a leader is a choice and you had to agree, disagree, or be unsure with that icebreaker.
Yeah, and I think that icebreaker was kind of the big, one of the big takeaways for me. I think that's what I kind of am focusing my um, leadership around in CMS. So I think we started out with that. I'd say this room was pretty split on it, but after that, we kind of left that question just for you to build on and we did some a little bit of learning and then we did some ha- um, some real-life situations where we brought, um, broke into groups. We had a seventh grade, one of your ten students, we had one of them lead our groups. What they, we had, I don't know who's in my group, but she was really nice. And we did um, some real-life situations and talked about it with our groups, talked about some, some solutions, some ways to deal with this stuff. And then at the end of the training that day, we revisited the icebreaker question. And the whole purpose of that was kind of to see how everyone's opinions changed and how everyone had grown throughout the day. So that was the big thing for me.
Great. So I guess uh, thirty more seconds. Anybody else, any other playbook student leader want to reflect on October thirtieth, which was uh, the day of our leadership training at Concord Library? Yeah, Jack, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, we went through a lot of um, real-life scenarios and talked over the scenarios. And it was kind of helpful because they're the same scenarios we were using to lead the uh, home bases. So we kind of had to, in a way, preview them, so we knew what we were going to say. So I found that really helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Jack. Um, before we talk about the work we did um, engaging all close to seven hundred students and about a hundred and thirty or so staff on November third, is there any questions from the committee about the leadership training that these, um, that eighty-five playbook student leaders received at the Concord Library?
I have a question. So Emmy, I know you, you were trained last year and again this year. Was there a difference between what you did for seventh grade versus eighth grade, or is it the same type of training?
Um, we had different scenarios, so two of the scenarios were the same. And um, then two of the scenarios were different, so it was a little bit of different problems and but we had the same um, icebreaker question. So it was cool to see um, the different opinions from the different years because obviously there's new students, there's sixth graders and um, last year's eighth graders left. But I would say mostly, most of the stuff was the same, the same idea.
Right. Anyone else have any questions for our students?
I have a question, Emmy. Like when you guys are going through these scenarios and these questions, do you find that you guys like all kind of come to consensus at the end? Or are people like really in disagreement about like what a leader might be or how to resolve a situation? Or do you guys end up sort of finding like, oh, there really is like kind of one good way to solve a problem? I'm just curious as to like what it all looks like with all you guys chatting about it in your groups.
Yeah, so I think a couple, on a cer- a couple of them, people had different approaches. I think there was um, a couple of them, we're talking about being a bystander versus being a leader in a situation. And I think we all kind of came to the same agreement that um, may like not being a bystander in the situation. But I feel like sometimes it depends on the question, but some people may have different opinions. But once you talk it out, usually towards the end, everybody's on the same page about it.
Cool, thanks.
So from um, October thirtieth, which was the day-long uh, student learning, uh, student leader training, um, the very following Thursday, which was November third, we did what we, we did in the springtime, but the difference is we gathered as a school community. Um, both buildings gathered and had an assembly um, for what is now, I think traditionally called our playbook day. Um, and that's where again, the Boston poet laureate, um, Portia, she came back. Um, and she did a couple readings for um, both buildings, the sixth grade building first, um, and then the seventh and eighth grade building. Um, and then the student leaders, I'm going to focus on the seventh and eighth grade building for a moment. The student leaders were actually sitting on the stage facing the student body, uh, facing the almost um, three hundred and fifty students that the student leaders were about to engage in for about three and a half hours in their advisory block, which is called home base. So on Thursday, November second, excuse me, on Thursday, November third, we started off with about a forty-five minute assembly uh, where we named um, the social justice work, this um, anti-discrimination bias prevention work as essential and urgent as our um, school community. And then um, we allowed the eighty-five student leaders to walk into the eighty-five home bases. And again, home base is our advisory program. Um, we have eighty-five student leaders, we have eighty-five home bases. So is there any student that would like to speak about their experience um, on the playbook day of Nov- November third? Yeah, Sam, you want to go first and then Luca, you can want to go after?
Yeah, um, so I feel like when we walked into the home bases on November third, I mean, October third, um, we
November third, actually.
Oh, November third. Um, we had some meaningful discussions about the scenarios that we got over in the training and the workshop. Um, so we first started with the icebreaker that we did in the training and we went over the scenarios and went over kind of what, how was happening to the people in the scenarios and what the solutions might be as to being a bystander or a leader. Um, and I think that overall, people like, uh, help people pay attention and be aware of kind of what can hurt other with their assumptions. And I think that it was a really good workshop to do.
Great. Luca, you want to expand on that? You, what was your experience on November third? When you had a home base of about eleven students, um, the adult was there as a guide, but you completely had this home base for almost four hours.
Yeah, my home base was much smaller. It was about six people, I believe. Um, but it was, it was a lot of fun. And there were a lot of quiet people that I kind of got to open up because of, you know, the scenarios and it the stuff we have to talk about is definitely hard to like, you know, talk about with people. But you have to talk about it with someone at some point. It's definitely difficult.
All right, thank you, Luca. Ryan, this was your second year as a, as a playbook student leader. Um, do you want to share a little bit about what made this year different for you on November third from the home base that you led last year as a sixth grade, when you were a sixth grade playbook student leader?
Um, yeah, so it was a lot more, um, I feel I wasn't, I was a lot more confident going to it because I had an um, experience already. And even without knowing the home base I was going to do, I felt like I had a lot more experience and wasn't as afraid or like knew what to talk about more because I had already done it.
Great. So before we share what, what's next, um, I guess, you know, I just want to make sure that the entire um, committee is familiar and understands what the student leaders um, did on November third. So for about three, three and a half hours, um, they led discussions on religion, race, orientation and disability. Um, and they were scenarios written by middle school students um, that did not happen at Concord Middle School, but could easily have happened at Concord Middle School or any other middle schools. Um, and they led and facilitated conversations about a student who, let's keep in the disability realm, um, you know, were either being questioned or in awkward situation or, or actually being bullied or harassed because of their disability. Um, and each scenario um, also had guiding questions to it that the playbook student leaders um, facilitated and guided. Before we share what's next, are there questions of the school committee for the playbook student leaders?
Go ahead.
I have a question. Um, is it, is being a leader in the playbook initiative, is this something that you would do again next year? And or would you encourage? or would you encourage some of your friends to do it? A lot of heads nodding. Yeah, why, why is that?
Luca, you have your hand up. Do you want to, or Jack, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I feel that it was really interesting hearing different people's opinions on the different subjects. And I definitely do it again. Um, I learned a lot and I thought it was just an overall good experience.
Um, to me, I am a hundred percent doing it next year. That was probably one of the most fun and awesome experiences I might be able to do in sixth grade. Um, and I will definitely encourage my friends to do it next year as well.
Well, that's a resounding.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Set of positives.
So I guess before sharing what's next, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Emmy uh come full circle and end with Emmy. Um, again, she is Concord's Project Three Fifty-One Ambassador. Um, and I'm asking a question I actually don't know the answer to. Has Project Three Fifty-One Emmy um engaged with you yet about trying to bring the playbook to Concord Middle School?
Uh, not yet. I went on the Zoom for just like the orientation and just learning about everything. But I don't think I've gotten an email about that yet.
And can I just ask Emmy to just explain what Project Three Fifty-One is for people in the audience that might not be sure of what it is?
Yeah, so I'm not a complete expert about it, but what I learned so far is that um, it's um, so there's, it's three fifty-one because there's three hundred and fifty-one towns in Massachusetts. And so one middle schooler, I believe it's only an eighth grader, one eighth grader from each town is selected to kind of go to um to go to this launch um orientation thing um over MLK weekend. Where you're going to do some acts of service and just try to create a positive environment throughout um your community, but just Massachusetts. And then later on, I'll have smaller projects a- and some bigger projects. Like I will be leading um a I created for handback in March and just, um, I think it's more around trying to be a positive leader throughout your community and just by going to this launch day, I think I'm going to learn a lot about how to help Concord and how to help CMS.
Thank you.
So the intersection between Project Three Fifty-One and the Boston Celtics um is the Boston Celtics actually reached out to Project Three Fifty-One and said, you know, even though we're the Celtics, uh, we need help getting into each middle school. Um, you know, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um, and because that's your structure, um, we're you know, we being the Boston Celtics is interested in using Project Three Fifty-One um as um kind of a platform to try to get the playbook um into each school in Massachusetts. Uh, what's fascinating there, and this is one of the earliest conversations I had with Emmy, was that um when she's being spoken to um, you know, sitting in a Zoom room with three hundred and fifty other eighth graders across the Commonwealth. You know, she's going to actually um be used as a model school for um the playbook initiative. Um, and soon she's going to be invited, I know this and I've shared this with her. She's going to be invited into trainings where other middle schools are looking to bring the playbook um to their school. And Project Three Fifty-One and the Boston Celtics um are looking at different ways to recognize um Concord Middle School and Concord Public Schools uh for their work done in the playbook. Um, I just want to finish with kind of what's next, um, because what's so interesting um and amazing in terms of how well our eighty-five playbook student leaders have engaged this year is we engage in this work so early in the school year that, you know, we have a good six, seven months left in the school year. Um, so I met with some playbook student leaders actually this afternoon. Um, and we did a project where we're putting together a bulletin board for both um both middle school buildings. Um, and we talked about bringing this work into um each elementary school. Um, and we're going to be meeting with um the elementary school principals on Thursday of this week um about an idea where um about ten to twelve playbook student leaders um visits each elementary school sometime in mid to late winter. Um, we also are looking at the playbook student leaders to revisit the home bases that they were assigned for the playbook. Um, the playbook day to lead future um bully prevention um and anti-discrimination and bias prevention lessons um that I should also cite are part of the law, a part of mass common law um that each school delivers a curriculum um that's based on bully-proofing um and on harassment. Um, we've had superintendents across the state reach out to Concord Middle School, um including our partner school, Jim or uh Superintendent O'Shea has reached out to us um a number of times, looking to get Concord Middle School students over to Carlisle Middle School. Um, and we're looking to bring back a community night um to not only inform um our parent and guardian community. Um, but also um have an evening in Concord and have an evening in Boston where we actually allow our parents and guardians to actually go through the workshop. Um, so that our parents and guardians can actually experience the work that our students um, you know, have already been through and now the student leaders will be leading in elementary schools and also in these parent and community nights um in both Boston and Concord. That's it.
Great. Well, thank you so much. What a great presentation. Thank you to the students for being leaders in your buildings. I mean, that is so important and for really taking that role into the home bases. And I'm sure that you have an impact on that home base where, you know, they're probably going to want to do it next year. So keep on doing what you're doing. So it sounds great. And Emmy, I'm sure we'll see you later with Project Three Fifty-One work. I think we saw Tyler Shepherd in the spring last year, right? So we'll see you again. So thank you, Mr. Cameron. Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Right. Uh, onto the reading of the minutes. So everyone should have the November eighth minutes. You should have gotten that email. And so I entertain a motion to uh accept the minutes from November eighth. Thank you. And Erin, in case you didn't hear, it's Carrie Rankin. Sorry, Cynthia Rady. Seconded, any discussion on the minutes? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I propose. Hey, we're all set. And Erin, I should also say for the main minutes, uh, Tomatoes de Rosa is also with us in person and Ayesha is on Zoom. So thank you. And then onto correspondence. You want to start with CPS?
Yeah, we only had one um cor- piece of correspondence at CPS. It was um a question about um the Mecca application process.
And at the region, we actually didn't have any correspondence.
Did not.
No, so that was a quick one.
Everyone's celebrating Thanksgiving.
Exactly. Um, and then we did our superintendent updates. We're all set there. So now we are on to with the regional budgets. So I will turn it over to Lori and Bob.
Yeah, I'll just queue it up. Bob's presentation's coming up. So we're bringing you the FY twenty-four uh high school regional budget. We've tried to provide you, and Bob obviously is the one who's, you know, put this all together. It's been the collective work of a lot of people. Um, central office administrators, the high school administrators and department chairs, a wide range of input. We don't do these in isolation. Um, so I think our goal tonight is to give you the high level version, which is what's in the slides. You have the line items so that you can take those home and study electronically or on hard copy, whatever. Um, you know, suits you best and let us know if you have questions. I think we've captured the themes, the trends, the patterns. Um, Bob's done that really concisely but effectively. So hopefully it will give you the the big picture of where we are at. So I will turn it over to Bob and this is a dialogue. So we'll make it a conversation and I think he'll be open to talking with you along the way.
Great. So um Erin's going to drive on the slides. Thanks, Erin. And we're starting off with um the regional budget. We can um advance, Erin.
Erin, can you go to the next slide?
Actually, I can share it too, right?
Yeah, there she is. I was going to say, I knew she was there.
Uh, so just process wise, this is something, um, we actually look at this in the bud shop. It's just a reminder of um kind of process we've gone through. Um, and as Lori mentioned, a lot of work has been done by uh building principals, uh administrators in the central office, as well as um department heads. Um, haven't listed them on the slide because I ran out of room, but department heads at both the middle school and the high school. So a lot of work went into uh building these budgets from the bottom up. And um, you know, we also just highlight there the parallel town process um where we've communicated guidelines, information to the guidelines committee. So right now we are in December. We're doing our preliminary presentation and the open hearing is December twentieth. Um, and we know that um there's times when there's more work that happens after that and there's new information that happens. So uh, a school budget is a lot uh less static um than a lot of budgets. We have changes in our our student uh population. We have other changes that happen in the district. We might have changes in energy prices. So there's a lot of variables. Um, this is our budget um that we're building based on the information we have available to us today.
Where would you recommend the school committee uh make a decision about a budget to adopt to bring forward to town meeting? I don't see that here. Are we ready to call out a timetable for that?
My understanding is, well, in my my experience has been that at the open hearing, that's typically when we would ask for a school committee vote. Uh, I don't know if that's been the past experience here.
And I think what what our plan was, if if we have any questions, you can send the questions on in between time. We're going to vote in December, right?
I think that's the intention. So you meet again in two weeks. We're recalling that as the public hearing, which we must run for politi- you know, legal processes. Um, if you're ready to vote on the twentieth, we'll certainly put a placeholder in for you to do so. The warrant in Concord closes January fourth. So if you don't vote the twentieth, you will need a budget meeting on January third. I don't know if that's motivating or not motivating, but y'all need a second, another meeting to finish it up.
Yeah, which, which is why we had that placeholder for that January third meeting.
Yeah.
And it would only be budget if we don't vote it on the twentieth.
Yeah. Right, on the agenda.
Yeah.
Alright.
Next slide, Erin, please. Uh, so uh just just a contextual information. I think it's just helpful to share in uh in budget presentation. So um you can see the enrollment trends. But you know, it doesn't necessarily reflect there is the um is the kind of um needs that we're seeing um emerge in students and the intensity of needs. Um, but you know, the population has declined a little bit uh from twenty-one to twenty-two. Next slide, Erin. This is uh additional contextual information. I know the school committee saw this uh previously, but these presentations will be viewed by others as well. So I just wanted to include this um information. We saw this in the workshop, but just kind of a context on our per pupil spending relative to other districts. These are kind of the districts we benchmark with. Um, and it also has a state total there.
Do we know why Westkin is such an outlier? Do they handle debt exclusion differently than we do or what's going on there?
Uh, I I can look into that. Uh, there's a certain uh piece of that is their extreme wealth relative to every other district. Um, they um, you know, which bucket it shows up in, I don't know. Like in terms of which DESI function is it teaching and learning? Is it instructional materials? So that's something I can look at, uh, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, just curious if debt was a factor there.
They have very small class sizes. I did look at that uh um in terms of class sizes. So maybe a lot of it salaries.
I dropped them dramatically over that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I believe it, yeah. My my recollection is it might have something to do with small class sizes, that their teacher um instructional uh line was the highest. Uh, next slide, Erin.
So I'll hop in and I'm not going to go through all of these. As I think are very familiar to you and almost more for other audiences as we share the budget going forward. Um, but it's important to note that all of these are always front and center to us and when when we're building the budget and are driving where the resources are going and the filters that we put on things. So you should recognize most of these initiatives, either as things that were started this past year and continuing on or um, you know, work that we know is coming forward in FY twenty-four. Um, I think one thing I will note, just the bottom note, in addition to all of the the work that we had named and purposely been moving, uh, what was never on the objectives was the pandemic. So just a note at the bottom of that, in addition to the physical safety needs, we've had to prioritize. There was and continues to be significant impact on each of these objectives and the urgency, intensity and greater level of need that anticipated. So in many cases, it's supported these objectives at a faster pace than we expected, special ed being probably an example there. Um, or we're having to do it in a different way than we expected because kids aren't where we thought. And there's just more need in general. So all that's worth noting, especially as we bring you the fiscal outcome of of what drives all of our work.
Next slide, Erin, please. Uh, so this is the regional budget um by the DESI one thousand function. This is how we typically report um throughout the year to the school committee on the one thousand level, the one hundred level. Uh, and this is the way that the state Department of Ed uh tends to group the their expenses for reporting purposes. So um you can see in terms of what's driving the increase, um, it's being driven by teaching and instructional support. The fixed charges, which I'll talk about. Um, there's an offsetting decrease in debt service and fixed assets. Um, and and tuition is actually down on a net basis, but um, I'll go through each of these in more detail, but it gives you a sense um of the overall contribution of each area. Um, it's a three point five percent expenditure increase, which equates to a million, three hundred and nine thousand uh nine hundred and seventeen dollars uh versus last year. Uh, the following slides will will go through each of these categories in more detail.
Uh, for fiscal twenty-three requested, is that in fact the July one approved budget?
That's the approved budget, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, next slide, please, Erin. So uh, if you're looking at the 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 handouts, you can um you can kind of cross check if you want. But um, so the first item we had a variance on was administration. It's um, it's it's actually a decrease. What's embedded in that is there's the the normal contractual increases. But there's a seventy-four thousand dollar decrease to a real, uh, due to a reallocation of costs from restructuring of Metco program staff. We had one staff member classified as administration last year. Um, we also have, um, you know, through this restructuring, we actually have um, a full-time director now at the high school. We have a counselor supported by it and we do have a tutor. So we've actually netted out to have additional support. Um, it's just not coming out of administration, the general fund anymore. Um, so administration is um at that level of a minor increase. Next slide, Erin. It was, yes, yep. Good memory. So teaching and instructional support, uh, it's a four point six in percent increase over the budget. The the gross dollars of nine hundred and nine thousand are um the largest uh component of the year-over-year increase for the region. When you break that down, um, a significant portion of it is CTA salaries, um which is a four point eight percent increase versus last year. There's a two point seven percent, two point seven five percent COLA cost of living increase that was in the contract for FY twenty-four. In addition, there's steps in lanes. Um, there weren't many retirements. We retained a lot of our teachers and one of the retirements we had was in a um subject matter area that's harder to hire in, um, it's either science or math. So, you know, we didn't have much of a savings uh back.
So far, I'll just add because it's December. There may be more coming, but we don't know and can't count on that.
Right. Uh, so that's the uh the largest component is the CTA salaries. We also have increases in in non-teacher salaries, seven point two percent, which is cost of living plus steps in lanes and a two point eight FTE increase. Um, and that's in our intensive programs. This is offset by a hundred thousand dollar reduction in the contingency. And that's something we looked at when we looked at our overall budget. We did want to get to guideline. Um, and that was one of the things that helped us get to guideline.
Like it's just there if we have to hire more PAs. And the FTEs for the, for the teachers is steady state? I mean, can I see the 2.8 increase for non-teachers?
It's very close to steady state. There's some minor increases in like percent like for like
So it's like you go from yeah, 0.75 to a full or whatever.
Question, how many retirements do we have in 22?
Last year? I don't know. Last year off the top of my head, I know this year we have four. And three of them, four that we know about, three of them are
And I'm just going to have to hold him back because some of them haven't actually been put to paper yet.
This year, I want to know about last year because I would assume that we would be seeing a drop in salary, drop in.
We took savings where we could based on those retirements for sure. I don't have the number off the top of my head either.
And there are
If that's what you're asking.
There are a bunch of savings in longevity.
But to your point, a lot of the retirements in both CPS and the region were taken in the budget, you know, planned
During the build.
During the build of the budget, they were factored in already with what was anticipated.
We can get that.
Yeah, I can find that. Uh, next slide, Erin, please. Uh, other school services. It's really the regular rate transportation pieces is many components includes fuel, includes parts. The, the more significant one there is the case special ed transportation of 9%. Which is based on information, updated information we received from case. It's driven, their formula is driven based on student miles or percentage of students transported by each district. So our share next year will go up 9%. And that number I don't think will, I think we're fairly confident in that number for the region. And overall, so overall, that's a 4.4% increase for other school services. Next slide, Erin, please.
Before you go on about this, um, I'm sorry, I, I was looking at this when you were just talking. So sorry if I dismissed it. So the key special education transportation, is this different from the transportation that will eventually over the next couple of years go away? Weren't you saying that some of the special education transportation?
Oh, it's subsidized through Circuit Breaker. So it's a payout and then reimbursed later. And there's a percentage now and it's going to continue to go up. Is it going all the way to 100%?
Yeah. So we'll continue to pay for, for this transportation. The state will re, the state started reimbursing us through Circuit Breaker.
A certain point.
They started including transportation in a calculation two years ago.
Yeah.
And it's getting phased in. I think it's over five years.
Okay.
Was that for regions only?
No, that's for everybody.
That's part of the Student Opportunity Act for everyone.
But wait, but that hasn't taken effect yet.
Well, what I'm talking about here is just the expense. But the, but the revenue part is, is being phased in. We're in like this next FY 24 will be year three of a year five phase in.
Okay. So when we file Circuit Breaker, we are now including transportation costs and we're getting a subsidy back. Eventually it will be 100% subsidy. But you're still going to pay it out, right? A lot like the tuitions.
And again, just as a reminder, Circuit Breaker, you're only getting reimbursed for the amount four, four times above the state per pupil average. So after 64,000, we start to get reimbursed.
Yeah.
And I think there's efforts to, to change that. I don't know how successful they'll be. I mean, but there's certainly been expressed that it would be nice to have that threshold be a little bit lower. So maintenance and operations, as you can imagine, in this environment of, you've probably seen it in your own bills, heating and electricity. We did have, so actually it's for us, it's actually relatively minor in the regional budget because we already had a little bit factored in or anticipated last year. I would say we had a little bit of a safety net in last year's budget. So the increase is still significant, 17,000, but not as large as it might have otherwise might have been. Building grounds maintenance is a $26,000 increase in contract services and supplies. That's factoring in things that we are already doing, that we are incurring expenses that been a little bit light on that budget. The contractual increases are on a percentage basis, not large, but in terms of their contribution to the 73,000, they're, they're noted there. So all in all, it's a 3.6% increase. Which
I'm surprised it's not higher.
Yeah, no, I was, that was a positive. I thought this was going to be a bucket that was going to be a little bit higher. It's a little bit higher in CPS, which we'll talk about later, but partly just because the way it was budgeted. Uh, next slide, please, Erin. So there's a lot happening in the fixed charges. The fixed charges includes health insurance for our employees. And that's increasing by 269,000 or 18%. There's a few contributors there. The first is that we're, we're expecting a 9% rate escalation in rates in FY 24. That's our most current information. We also saw increased participation levels in coverage. And in addition, there's an increased share by the district on certain plans. We're aligned with the town of Concord. We, we had some shifts to plans. We're now offering Tufts, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. There was some changes, there's some impact in the change. And through that, the town took on a little bit more of a share. And we're in alignment with that at, at the region. The, you know, that, so the, there's three factors contributing to the health increase. The retiree health insurance increased by 26,000. There are some retirees who, who use the the regular healthcare plans if they're not of retirement age. A lot of them will take the medics supplement plans, which don't have as large of increases. We just found out that our retirement, we just received guidance on a retirement assessment last week. It's a pretty large increase. We're going to try to dive into that more. We haven't been able to dig into it, but we do have a number that was reported to both us and the town last week. It's a hundred $20,000 increase. We'd like to understand that a little bit more. So as we, as we do, we'll, we'll share that, but that's a, a large contributor to 16% increase for the region. Last piece is that the property and liability insurance increased by 88,000. We previously had our policy embedded in the town policy and received kind of a share of it. It's been broken out. We now have a separate policy. I'm not sure if the allocation that we had in the past was, was accurate or not. I do know that the rate that we budgeted for next year, we're actually paying. It's based on what we're paying, what we paid in FY 22. So we're reflecting a change that's already happened in our FY 24 budget. So FY 22, this change has already occurred.
Did that come out of the town or am I?
It's funded, Maya is the insurer.
No, I mean, the, the uncoupling of region from town. Where, where did that originate? Do we know?
I, I think it was a, I thought it was a mutual decision was my understanding.
So it was an elective?
Yeah. I, I do think it's, it's beneficial for us to have our own, our own policy. Most regions I know do have their own insurance.
Yeah, I was, I was curious that we were combined with the town, not that I was opposed to it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's always worked for us over the years.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have a position on it. Just curious, it was changed.
Or that the, it's already been reflected or like there's already
So the cost that I budgeted, this, when we look at, actually, if you see it, then it's probably in the line item budget. If you look at FY 22, we already paid. We, you know, we had budgeted 40 something. We're already paying a hundred thousand.
23.
FY 22, I think it occurred.
You mean, you're talking about the jump that we're seeing now as opposed to?
Yeah, the jump just hasn't been budgeted. So now we're
We've always paid it, but it hasn't been.
No, no, not always, just recently, just starting, and I think it was FY 22.
Looks like 22 is like 60,000 or something like that.
But we're happy to get it.
And then there's the jump that happens.
Beta complete now.
Yeah. I can't tell you for sure that it's done, whether it's 22 or 23, I can double check. And so we're, we're carrying over the policy into the next year. A side note, one of the nice things about having your own insurance is that Maya does offer grants. So we're able to get risk management grants through them. We did get some, a couple this year, some minor ones to do some risk management opportunities for our maintenance group. So it's kind of a nice benefit that goes with it.
We're trying to get on that list and off of the one where they send fire warning signs to other districts about fire safety and fish. You know, it's a fish heaters on the so
I got that warning notice.
There is, there are reasons our costs have gone up because we've had claims last year. Too far, yeah.
That's tend to happen.
So, and I do think, you know, Maya is a good partner for, for the district. They've done risk management assessments for a lot of districts. So we'll certainly take advice and guidance from them and look to have best practices in place. So a lot of this, the, the 496 in total for fixed charges, it's a, it's a big budget driver. And not much is education, you know. These are all things that are happening outside the classroom.
Do you expect that to change next year or in the coming years or do we need to, what do you expect?
I mean, I hope, I would hope at, at worst it normalizes and maybe there's some opportunities if we have better experience for us to see if there's savings. You don't usually get savings offered readily by insurance companies, but and we can certainly talk to them, look at things that might help. So I mean, I'm hopeful that at worst it's, it's going to be level. I mean, knock on wood, we need to be responsible and make sure we don't have, you know, more claims, but.
And on the employee health insurance, there was a major plan change last spring because Fallon, you know, wasn't available. And we had to transition a whole bunch of people to other plans. I think Blue Cross coming on was appealing to a lot of people. So we picked up some folks that enrolled that hadn't been. Plus the town has gone up to 70% on some of the plans to compensate and be supportive of the process. I think those are one-time factors that are now going to be normalized and you won't see that same increase most likely.
Next slide, please, Erin. So out of district tuitions is actually down 55,000.
You've got to explain.
Yes, so. But yeah, to understand that you can't really look at the total, there are the actual costs we're paying and then there's offsets. So the, the gross tuition costs are increasing 669,000 or 22%. That's driven primarily by the private school increase of 14% for tuition rates. It's also reflecting the fact that we have four CPS students transitioning from grade eight to grade nine that are out of district. And four from Carlisle that were out of district in grade eight that are moving up and becoming the region's financial responsibility in grade nine. That's eight, that's netted off with some graduating students. So that's what brings it from the 14% increase up to 22%. The good news is that when you have additional out of district costs, there are offsets from Circuit Breaker and IDA. And we had a significant increase. Some of these cost increases. Well, again, we talked about transportation being factored into Circuit Breaker. That's one driver. So the Circuit Breaker increase and IDA increase in total or a $706,000 increase, most of that is Circuit Breaker. And we do have to use a hundred thousand dollars in current year Circuit Breaker funds. We usually try to carry over a full prior year amount into the current year. We'll have to dig into it a hundred thousand, but just for a sense of context, our, our Circuit Breaker million revenue is going to be 1.2 million and change. So using a hundred thousand seems to be certainly prudent and reasonable.
And always asks about, so then we carry the 1.1 that's like, so if we, if we bring in 1.2, but we eat up 100, like we can, we can carry over.
Okay, that will be the plan. Yeah. So that's, uh, next slide, please. Yep.
Kind of trajectory, like we should be, we, we should be in good.
Yeah, that's still a very healthy Circuit Breaker balance. We've had, I, I've had years here, we had zero in the region and obviously we're not even close to that. So it's a balanced approach to a pretty substantial need this year, obviously. So I think we're feeling comfortable with it.
We are, first a little bit, the, the word guidance on the 14%. Is that guidance to private entities? Is that a ceiling? Is that?
I use, only use guidance because I said it was from OSD. OSD is supposed to provide guidance. But I asked and was told that basically their guidance is followed like so. They might not be, I don't know if they are the entity that sets the rates, but they're required to provide guidance on what the rate increase will be. I asked the OSD contact and they said, no, this is what your rates will be. It'll be a 14% rate increase and that's been communicated by other people at DESI as well.
And does that get accompanied by any expectations from the private schools? Or is it simply to meet their escalating costs and their, their services to us remain unchanged?
There is, there is a two components to it. There is a, I might have the exact numbers, but I think it was about a 6% was inflationary based on the policy metrics and it was inflation based. And there was an 8.8% piece that was called the workforce stability factor. We'd all like 8% to be but I do think the reason that, I mean, I, they didn't say, they didn't, they didn't communicate it too well, but I do think that the, the workforce stability factor is reflective of their difficulty of being able to hire people for what are probably the most needy students who can't be serviced in schools, have to go to, uh, uh, district placements. What we would hope for is that the state maybe will see that districts are impacted and there'd be some supplemental funding offered and communications. I think we've, I don't know if we shared it here already, but an email went out from the four of us to the state asking for
Just a template from the superintendent's association.
And all sorts of other school districts sent the same thing. You know, we haven't heard anything. I know they have varying needs, but you know, there is certainly.
So that's important. 14 is not a, a ceiling that people might, might not hit. It's an expectation. You've got to bury it into our budget.
So the salary, non-salary breakout, just when you step back and you, you know, we looked at it by DESI category. I think it's also helpful to look at it salary, non-salary. So this is the budget in total. Uh, in total, it's a 3.8% increase on the salary accounts and 3.2 on the non-salary. And on the next slides, I'll, I'll kind of jump into the key drivers there. Next slide, please, Erin. And so, you know, these are things we've seen, but just to, to, to look at it in the, in the non-salary bucket, the, the main drivers here are the health insurance. Have combined the active and the retirees there together, the retirement assessment from the Concord Retirement Board, property liability insurance, and then the case special ed transportation. There are other, you know, increases and decreases as well. These are the key drivers I, I, I wanted to highlight. The debt services decrease, the transportation vehicle replacement, we have leases ending. And we've also factored in two new leases. So you know, we are continuing to invest in transportation, but there was a bit of a bubble a few years back where multiple vehicles are coming off. And then the out of district tuition increase we just talked about. So those are kind of the key drivers on the non-salary side.
I know it's short money, but this is my opportunity to ask, 95K, are we continuing to electrify?
Those are factoring in costs of diesel vehicles.
Diesel vehicles.
Yeah, electric would be an additional 180,000 per bus.
You know, I'm going to have a hard time supporting more diesel.
I understand, I understand. I think there's a, there's a potentially a, an additional discussion that would have to happen somewhere else. I don't know where about how to fund that. I personally, from what I look at, would have, I don't think that we have the capacity in our capital or operating budget to pay for electric. I don't think that we have the capacity in our capital or operating budget to pay for electric vehicles unless we come up with either more capital or there's some mechanism, we've looked at vehicle, the grid charging, Brian Folds has talked about that, but it's, it's a little bit theoretical now. You know, if there's some other mechanism to fund it, that would be the way to do it, or we'd have to ask for more funding and that's where we are now, doesn't mean that's where we're going to be forever.
And the age of the fleet to me is a factor, I don't think there's time to hold off right now, John actually asked for twice as many buses as you're getting in these two budgets because his concern of the, the age of the fleet, so I don't know, maybe in a couple of years when we get to a fleet that's newer overall, you'll have window to wait and see if there's a way to get the funding secured. But at the moment, we're just trying to be operational and fiscally realistic, so.
Yeah, and with time.
We buy five buses in twenty fifteen?
Say that again.
Didn't we buy five buses in twenty fifteen, sorry, coming up to a cliff rather than, is it in ten years?
Well, we have four buses on their way this spring.
No, no, I'm saying, but we're, we're heading to having to replace a whole bunch of buses potentially.
Well, we've tried to balance, you're correct, there's five that came on all at the same time when the high school start time happened. Part of the cycle we are trying to build, which we've done in a couple of spots, is that the incoming two or so per year, per district keeps the fleet new enough that we can be operational knowing, so that's probably part of John's ass because he can see those aging up, but we feel like we've got enough of a handle on it that we can stay operational without asking for additional costs here, so rather we brought you savings because one of the leases was rolling off.
So, yes, and we are funny, this reflects the two for CCRSD Cynthia, so you know, we are funding it out of both districts, so two from each, that's for a year. Next slide, please. And so we talked a little bit about this before, but the CCTA salaries, when I reflected it on the, the instructional cost driver slide, it reflected just items coded to teaching and learning, the nurses are in the three thousand series, so I just wanted to just provide a district-wide view of CCTA salaries, you can see the, a good chunk of that is contractual and then steps and lane advancements with limited retirements. The non-teacher salaries is is a three point six percent increase with contractual increases and additional tutor. We reduced the contingency by a hundred thousand, as I had mentioned, that's rolls into the salary lines, it's really intended to reflect contingency for additional staff. And then the sick retirement program payouts are, are reduced by thirty seven thousand, those are, those payments are winding down. I don't know, there's, and they'll continue to dwindle down. Those programs are not being offered and so those payouts will continue to reduce until there's zero.
Approved increased salaries for substitute teachers. And I know we really utilized a lot of substitute teachers in the last quarter of last year, how are we tracking? Like I noticed it was level funded right at seventy thousand, I think also for next year, is, I mean, is the, I know, I mean, the hope is.
You're helping us retain the ones we have, I think that part mattered.
Yeah.
Recruiting's still really challenging, but at least we're in the upper end of the market now so that we're more likely to be appealing, kind of like the bus driver answer, I think.
Yeah.
I do think we retained some of what we had because these folks can actually, we all share the same technology and they can just put multiple districts in their portal and hop literally, you know, ubiquitously, so we, we are now competitive for sure, so I do think it's helped to maintain. Yeah.
Yeah, we can monitor it, I don't, we don't anticipate it's a concern for us next year.
Is that like, like something they access like daily, weekly, like?
It depends how they want to, they get to structure their own time, so they might go in and book themselves, some of them like to plan ahead and book themselves way ahead if they know. Some are on there at five AM grabbing jobs.
Yeah.
There's a lot less of that, you know, in the days I served, you were getting phone calls at five o'clock in the morning like that. The, the morning of is the hardest to fill because people have so many choices. Yeah, so it's still a challenge, still definitely a challenge.
Okay, next slide, please. So I know this is something that I was asked about, I wanted to provide a, start with the high-level update and I can always provide more information at a future meeting if, if this isn't as detailed, but these are just kind of a summary of the ESR grants that we've had over the past few years, a couple of years and I'm really focusing on what's left. And that's the ESR three grant, we do have money left in ESR two and our American Rescue Plan IDA, which is for special ed. We are using some of that for supplies and materials that in, in the special ed area. We anticipate, well, the deadline for the ARP IDA and the ESR three, you can see is nine thirty twenty twenty three, so we really are targeting spending those down this year. You know, if need be, we could, we could stretch some into next fiscal year, but our goal is to utilize that money in FY twenty three. And ESR three. The region that's significantly smaller than CCS. And those are just going to be spent down. In the region. Parents and families, less of a prevalence and a low income population. So at the end of twenty four, ESR funds will be fully spent down, the deadline is nine thirty twenty twenty four, if we do have some opportunity to maybe spend to defer some into twenty five, we'll try, but the purposes we have, we anticipate spending in the region through FY twenty four. The next slide shows what the uses are of ESR three. Next slide, please, Erin. So this is what we had in our grant and this is how we will spend the funds. The bulk of it's dedicated to a specialist teacher, reading specialist, the language-based program.
Mm-hmm, in the language-based, part of our intensive programs.
Yeah, it's in our intensive lang, special ed language-based program. And so, I mean, really the only thing there I'd say that would be something we consider spending in twenty five, if we were able to, would be some of the summer school costs, the reading specialist is a school year position.
And obviously, we're going to have to absorb that, yeah, yeah, my goal would be to wean into it and do a portion of it. But one way or another, we're going to have to absorb that, it's one position, so it's not a huge clip.
Next slide, please. Okay, so what we've just finished so far is, is the expense budget and the grants. Obviously, the towns are interested in how this translates to an assessment, so you know, in order to arrive in assessment, we first look at our revenues as one of the offsets. These are the changes that I made to the revenue assumptions, I did in the, it's a, it's a kind of an eye chart, so I didn't feel like trying to squeeze it into a slide, but in the agenda, there's a link to the full assessment model. If you want to see it, but the changes we made were an increase to chapter seventy eight. Sixteen thousand, which is relatively small, there's a possibility that we'll get more funding because of the Student Opportunity Act, but we've budgeted based on what we're receiving, what we received in FY twenty three. Or will receive in twenty three, excuse me, chapter seventy one aid has been adjusted to reflect the most recent chapter seventy one aid we received, which was higher than we budgeted, so that's a substantial increase of nineteen percent. And interest rates have gone up significantly from barely above zero to still low, but a little bit better. So we have a sixty thousand dollar increase there, two hundred and fifteen thousand overall, those revenues are based on trends. We've held excess and deficiency level at three hundred thousand. And so that's what we've done kind of from a revenue standpoint, so those revenues will offset to an extent the, the expenditure increase, next slide, please, Erin. And so this is a kind of a summary of the assessment model, and again, this, the, the more detailed version you've seen in the past is in the agenda as a separate link. But again, a bit of an eye chart for PowerPoint, so we start with our total expenditure budget when we deduct our revenues. In our utilization of E and D, we arrive at an assessment amount to the towns of thirty three million, three forty one, eight thirty, you can see the breakout for Concord and Carlisle, twenty five, two forty six. Twenty five, four twenty six, four eighty for Concord, seven million, nine fifteen, three fifty for Carlisle. There's a comparison to twenty three, a difference, the percent increase for Concord is one point eight six percent. For Carlisle, it's eight point six six percent, another important thing I wanted to highlight was the, the assessments based on the percentage of students for each town, their relative share of students at the high school, that percentage has shifted a bit from seventy seven and change at Concord down to seventy six and in the opposite direction, it increased at Carlisle. That's what's causing the one point eight six percent at Concord and the eight point six six at Carlisle, the shift in percentages of students between the two towns and a relatively small shift might seem like a small shift of a little bit more than one percent, has a pretty big impact because it's on the total dollars of the whole budget.
The only thing I'll say is we've been better at forecasting it, so it's not a surprise, it's still a little sticker shock, I admit myself yesterday. No, but they're not easy either, right, so.
Have we met with Carlisle FinCon yet?
We just got a date with them for January twelfth and I just sent it to Melissa with these slides.
Yeah, so I don't know if they've seen these exact numbers, but they've heard the shift in student trend and that it will have an impact, so I think they're expecting it, I don't know if they know.
From our other meeting, I think they're expecting, yeah.
I think I got the packet after they'd met.
So next slide, please. And so this is also the slide that we've traditionally shown, I think that well, it shows the increase if you don't factor in debt. And if you do factor in debt, so if you don't factor in the debt service decreasing, we have debt service that's been set up to decrease. That we had two point seven percent increase, if you factor in the decreased debt service, it's a one point eight six percent increase. Well, ultimately, the taxpayer impact is the one point eight six percent and the eight point six six percent in Carlisle. And I reflected the debt there, just so you can see it separately, it hasn't been reported, shown elsewhere in the slides. And again, the full, full set of data for the assessment calculation is in a separate attachment that you all have. Think that, I don't know, Erin, next slide, please.
You have one more.
Okay, yeah, so this is a projection, it needs to be certified by the Mass Department of Revenue. So, and there's sometimes some minor offsets based on cash timing issues. But we, we ended last year at one million, six seventy one, ninety, our revenues were favorable to budget of two hundred and ninety eight, one oh two. That's why I was able to, to budget more revenue in the regional budget. Expenditures were just under budget, that was the balance we had left in our budget last year, we spent nearly all of it. And then we need to deduct the planned usage of E and D, which we had baked into our budget and that would get us to a projected balance of really just almost level to last year. Four point six percent of our operating budget, there's a cap of five percent that we're allowed to have. So there's a little bit of room for us to increase that if we were able to, but not much, we're pretty close to, to the cap, which is, I'd say a healthy position to be in. And.
It's probably a very simple thing, I'm just not seeing here, fiscal twenty three expenditures less than budget.
Twenty two, it should say.
Thank you, okay, and then the previous line should read twenty one?
No, twenty two also.
Twenty two also, so both of you read fiscal twenty two.
Correct. I believe, next slide, I think it just says questions. So hopefully I've answered some of your questions as we've gone through, but wanted to see if you had any other questions that I hadn't addressed or if there's other information that you had.
So just for clarity, this does get to Concord's guideline, we were so we were able to do it without touching instruction, you can see we had to be more flexible this year than maybe other years, but I think that's good news.
Congress guideline is two point four and we don't know Carlisle's.
No, correct, we don't.
A lot of work, thank you.
Yeah.
And if you have any, if, obviously if you have any questions right now, we can go through those now, but we're also keeping track of any questions that came up throughout the session tonight. And if you have other questions, we'll send them to you by Tuesday and that way we can try and get any additional things that might need a little bit more research done before the twentieth.
If members of the public have comments, how do they reach us?
On this, I suppose, on anything, oh yeah, they could just send an email to the, the, through the form on our website.
So, go to the homepage.
The homepage, school committee.
Okay.
And they're too late, yeah, we all receive it, so if you have any comments, the region receives, it's all seven of us plus Dr. Hunter and Domingos, Naija, Domingos receives the region and Ayesha receives CPS. So thank you, thanks for that, Bob.
Sure.
Great question about the reading specialist, because we have the reading specialist that's covered through the, through the grant, but in the in line item, there was a reduction of point five for reading specialist.
So we, we have it funded in the grant and we have it half-funded in the general fund, so we've. We had. The general fund.
That's good news.
So, so we have a, a little bit of a supplanting there, which you're allowed to do, you're not normally allowed to do in grants, but you are a investor, so that's half of that position's cost. It gives us a little bit of a safety net in the general fund. But.
So that's, that's something you net out before, but that's, yeah.
That was the goal, was to be able to.
You know, sometimes the whole thing is there and then, and then you show the offset later. Right, 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 accounting, okay.
So this softens.
It's not that we're reducing a half of a.
No, no, I just, this is.
Yeah, no, it's fiscal, fiscal management only, correct, thanks for the clarity.
General fund budget, it also softens the impact in FY twenty five by us getting half in the budget twenty four.
I couldn't remember if we held it, a lot of changes last week as we tried to get this closed for you.
Lori, in, in terms of main office, are you expecting that we return to principal, to assistant principals?
Oh, that's certainly my expectation, yes, yes, so there's no changes there.
I was asking if for fiscal twenty four, we're assuming a return to principal and to assistant principals.
Yeah, yep, thank you for asking.
Okay, anything else before we close the region meeting? Oh, wow, I know.
I really haven't studied it, we just got it.
No, I know, and so in, that was intentional, just to give us the amount of time to get everything in front of you that, that was the most complete it could possibly be. So now just let it marinate for a week and send us your questions and we'll go from there.
A general question, I mean, sort of something we talked about over in Carlisle is about the cyclical nature of things like textbooks and software licenses and stuff like that and and our software is something we've talked about, but I mean, what are you seeing, is it, I mean, are you seeing that basically like I mean, yeah, there's the cyclical nature and the, the maybe textbooks overall are reducing in cost and the software is increasing.
Maybe Kristen can answer that, because she spent a lot of time close to both of those topics. Oh, you need a mic, Kristen.
Three general trends, the first trend is that textbooks are turning into software, so most textbooks are no longer, you know, what we carried home a couple decades ago. So most textbooks are no longer, you know, what we carried home uh, a couple decades ago. They are actually just online. Um, and so the cost of those is a recurring cost. Meaning we don't just buy a two hundred dollar, and yes, that's what they cost, math textbook. We actually pay every year a license, right? So uh, that's how all of our major curricula work now in math and um, social studies, science and so forth. Um, it's the way of the world. Um, and so. The second trend is that during COVID, some of those um, were offered to us for free. Um, and so people got very interested in them, teachers, as we were trying to provide education um, online. Um, and since then, um, the prices have basically been jacked up over the last um. Couple of years, um, so much so that actually the Wall Street Journal just did a big article about it. Uh, the percentage increase, one of the products that we had used, we don't use it anymore, iReady. What the cost went up three hundred percent. So we don't use that anymore. Um, it was already expensive. Um, so um, we are trying to pare back what we're doing in terms of software to the. The bare essentials of what we need for our curriculum and no longer need to deliver content. Virtually for kids at home.
Yes, in Carlisle, we were talking about somebody who was surprised, like, oh, wow, it's a forty thousand dollar savings this year in like math curriculum. And then it's like, no, it's not really, because in three years, we're gonna have to pay it again.
Yeah.
Um, and so we are talking about it, Carlisle, like, how can we look at things sort of more globally so that we make sure that we. We don't get excited about short-term savings and forget about the long-term implications. Uh, so that's.
Yeah, so um, that three-year cycle is a big deal, and we've tried to. Offset them from each other, so we'll do math in one year, science in another year, world language is very expensive in another year and so on.
Yes. Um, so uh, just one thing, so if, if our questions, and I guess.
Bob, microphone, microphone.
So if there are questions, I assume you're writing.
Region will come to me. So if you have region questions, send them to me and we're gonna do CPS next and send those to Alexa.
And I'll, I'll look at whether I think it's something I should, like, just put in a memo or something, or an email, or if it's something that's broad enough that applies to the presentation. Um, assuming that at the open hearing, I basically go through the same presentation with the public here. Um, but if there's something that's been um, highlighted, I think might help, I might just add it.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so at this point, um, I would like to join the region. So thank you to Sarah and Sharon, and you guys are done.
All right. Mark, you wanna unmute us? No, we'll just stay on mute the whole time. All right, guys. Hard to make social hour be over, Domingos, but it's something. Um, all right, so we're gonna go right into our budget discussion with Bob again, taking us through the recommended budget. I think we can, the first like four or five slides are duplicative, right? Yeah, we can kind of.
We do, we're skipping the middle school update.
I'm sorry?
We're skipping the middle school update.
I thought that was next.
I haven't heard.
I'm sorry?
No, it's not, but you can.
Oh, sorry about that.
I don't know, it doesn't matter to me.
Thank you, I missed it. I don't like the flipping of the page. I don't even know where my agenda is. Let's be honest, where to go.
It's, it's update time.
All right, it's update time. So, um, thanks, Gary. Um, there really isn't an update insofar as, um, you know, coming from court or I. The building committee has not met since um, we last met, which was the twenty-second of November. Um, we, the building committee meets again next Thursday on the fifteenth, which is when um. We will commence the work on creating an alt-deduct list. However, we all discussed last week, or two weeks ago, I guess now. The idea of the potential of floating a capital article. Um, that might address some of the things that come from that November, sorry, December fifteenth upcoming meeting. So my thought is, if. You know, let's say, and, 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 and there's so many moving parts and there's so much that's to be determined, which is what makes this discussion tonight kind of tricky. If we see collectively that a bunch of what gets all added to that alt-deduct list. Really becomes things that don't actually get cut per se. That don't get sort of eliminated from the scope of the project, but are really deferments of costs. I think it could be a responsible discussion for us to have if we see those things that get. You know, let's say they're items one, two, three, four, whatever. Um, do we? Take the, the aggregate of those, what, what I would see as deferments rather than scope reductions. And bundle together a capital article. Um, so before the building committee meets, we can't really have that discussion. Because. A week from Thursday to the fifteenth. Um, capital, draft capital articles are due on the sixteenth, but I think you had.
Yeah, I was in touch with the townhouse, um, Chris Carmody and Carrie. They're, that's, that's flexible. Uh, the January fourth dates the real bottom line, deadline. So to that point, perhaps it would be appropriate for you and the chair to have a discussion as how we would fund such an article. Because it would not be within the levy, I don't believe. I think it would have to be a borrowing above the levy limit, probably two and a half. So, but that would be important because that would be a vote, so there's a lot of logistics around that. Um, and I don't want us to have to have another election if we can avoid it. So maybe if you could talk to the moderator and town manager. Um, and then, uh, you know, one of the reasons they said to have it in by the sixteen is they have legal review. So I just want to be sure we have.
Yeah.
We don't.
Yeah, there's subsequent legal reviews. There's a whole timeline professionals have that I don't think everybody has. That um, happened in later in the winter after the warrant closes, but it's all a good idea to start getting more information, for sure. Yeah. Um, I just, my feeling is. I wouldn't want us to put together something that didn't make any sense, you know, so if we were, you know, then, and it's just. The order of operations here doesn't work out in our favor based on when that middle school building meeting is. Um, I wouldn't wanna take a stab at a number. I would want it to be meaningful. And if we do it at all, I would want it to be something that is meaningful and purposeful and, you know, makes sense and dovetails with that list. Um.
If we do have such an article, though, I think we do have to plan to meet on the third of January.
Oh, yeah.
Because we would need two.
Well, yeah, and, well, we, we similarly too, we had, I think Lori had talked to Chris Carmody about. Um, that would be something that I, we would be able to discuss on the twentieth. We have a meeting here on the twentieth. Um, you know, so I'm, I'm hoping that the. This discussion and the discussion on the twenty-second um, sort of serve as our, our first.
Twenty.
No, uh, no, sorry, the twenty-second that we had in November. So we've had sort of two, like, kind of preliminary discussions. That we'd be able to maybe take a vote on something if we had a number on the twentieth.
Well, I have some strong reservations about it, and, but I don't know what the content is yet, so you know what I'm saying, so. I don't think I could vote without having.
Okay, so yeah, so then maybe we would have something again on the third. So, yeah. We've got a placeholder, a place held anyway, so.
We are gonna be meeting Thursday morning with tomorrow being a deadline for Alexa. And for me and for Lori to submit to the chairs of the building committee. Uh, any alternate deducts that we would recommend be considered, were it necessary. In order to live with a hundred and ten million dollar total cap for the project.
Mm-hmm.
So if you have ideas, share them with, with the three of us.
Do you have a ballpark as, as to what you're aiming for in terms of a total number?
Well, we don't know if uh, the bids are gonna come in in excess of a hundred and ten, and if so, by how much.
Right, yeah.
The, the rapid uh, uh, cost increases are now abating a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some contractors are now eager to fill up their fiscal twenty-four calendar of work. So we might uh, see, see the uh, the fear factor reducing a little bit. About the, the cost increases that we've been experiencing so far, cost increases that have been hitting construction more than other segments of the economy. Um, what we wanna do is, uh, speaking for myself, Alexa, you weigh in as you wish. Um, we wanna come up with ideas for uh, cost management. If it's necessary, so that we can go ahead with the project um, with uh, the hundred and ten that we have quote-unquote in hand. If the new seven million dollars gets added to the current one oh two and.
That's the assumption with this discussion.
It's the assumption with this, with the, uh, exactly. And uh, further, we want to see that any changes wouldn't throw the construction schedule off. Because if it throws the construction schedule off, it throws other things off. And then the, the savings that we might realize, the cost management that we might realize, get lost in the delay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a lot of moving parts, but if other school committee members have sentiments that they want us to bring forward, please, please do so.
So are you submitting what you think should be on the alt-deduct list? Like individually, do you submit?
Individually, yes. And the two chairs, the building committee are gonna put together that list in its entirety.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, then we're just gonna have at it, I guess.
Well, and I just. The first preliminary step is that the professionals would vet.
That's what I was gonna say. That's why they're due tomorrow, so there's a week's worth of vetting by the professionals that they're viable and. Doable at almost ninety percent.
Well, they can, they can weigh in, but they're not the decision makers.
Well, no, but their professional opinions are really important.
There's a lot of professionals on the committee as well, let's.
Well, can I, can I ask you a question? Where did, where did bleachers end up? Like, I went to that last meeting and honestly, I still don't know where, like, the bleachers in that gym ended up.
So because, because um, any. Building committee with good sense pursues only one kind of strategy in the scenario we are in. You either create, um, you either go to a town meeting vote with um, with a plan to. Uh, add alternate, which means the strategy would be to bring forth a. Uh, uh, as much scope reduction as possible with the caveat that if they, if it came. If a bid or estimate came in under budget, there would be things that would be added in succession. That's one kind of strategy.
Yeah.
We decided, and, and the, the professionals in the room said, that's a less um. Advisable strategy because it's more challenging for the general contractors to kind of make sense of that. So then there's an alternative strategy, which is to present of, to the estimators and to the general contractors. The, the full scope, or not the full scope, but the, but the current scope. And then the idea behind that would be then, if you were over budget, you pursue a strategy of deducting things systematically. In, in a, in a prescribed, agreed upon, voted upon order.
So that, so that the project doesn't come to a halt.
Right, so where did the bleachers end up?
So the bleachers ended up being in this, in the project that will be estimated. So essentially, but, but they become number one, and then there, there was a wood look um, element. So the bleachers and the wood look um, finishes in um, some of the hallways. Become essentially deduct alternate one and deduct alternate two by default. And then what we will pursue on the fifteenth are, how do we fill in the rest of the list, three, four, five, six, seven?
Put on it, or is there?
As, as much as we can agree upon, because that's what keeps you, I think, safest, you know, within recent.
And, and we are bound by that list.
Yes, okay. So.
In, in the order in which.
Yes, it's, it's very prescribed.
Bleachers and the wood are for sure, the number is one.
One and two?
Yes, because we had already agreed to scope, we had agreed to reduce them in the scope. But then because we were pursuing this, so two things happened, but because we were pursuing this plan, one and two, as Court mentioned. Prices and whatnot, the economy is stabilizing enough that, um, you know, I think that. People are a little bit more cautiously optimistic about this next round of estimating. Um, so I think those two things happening at once were the impetus for, you know, ensuring that they're there.
Or maybe one, then ninety percent.
Oh, gosh, it's like the January fourth round meeting.
January, okay.
Yeah, it's very close, so, um, and, and, and again, make no mistake, this, the idea of doing even our own article. Is like the backup plan for the backup plan. Um, you know, and, 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 you know, who knows? I mean, with the economy stabilizing, let's hope it's not even something we'd ever have to entertain and that would never even see the light of day.
And are you gonna bring those lists that eventually the building committee votes on? Are you gonna bring them back to us to discuss?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I would think that we'd get them to you that day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we'll have a discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll have a opinion, but.
Yeah, yeah.
In by another town.
Town committee.
Yeah, yeah, we won't, we won't get to weigh in on them, but they'll help inform our decision if we choose to advance an article for town meeting.
Why didn't we pick bleacher and wood look ceiling? Uh, one would look ceiling because aesthetically, although very, very, very nice, um, it wouldn't have a direct impact on construction. And bleachers, because in the estimation of the building committee, that could be perhaps of our. Possible choices, most suitable for community fundraising.
So if I could just state my opinion here on that one, because I feel really uncomfortable with the community fundraising aspect of that. I feel strongly that schools need bleachers in a gymnasium, not just for sports. But for academic purposes, for assemblies, for everything else, and if there's any way. Uh, that that, if my opinion matters to you two on the building committee or all of that. I mean, I, I feel really strongly about those bleachers and, and I do think that this community doesn't have an appetite for as much fundraising as maybe had happened in the past.
Although I hear you, what I'm not hearing is what you would. Put on the list in lieu of that, in order to save the project if we had to live with a hundred and.
Right, I mean, if you have to live with it, and you gotta save it, but I do think it is gonna be a deferred cost.
Oh, yeah, most certainly.
Well, I think the committee agrees with you by saying there would have to be alternate forms of, of funding for that. We wanted to move ahead with a hundred.
Yeah.
From a process standpoint, how does, how do you write a hypothetical warrant?
Well, you don't, which is why we, like, which is why we, we can't really have it to do it tonight.
But not tonight, like, we won't even know until even January thirteenth.
We'll know, we'll know, well, we'll know on the fifteenth, after that meeting, the.
Is on the list.
What's on the alternate deduct list, so that, with a price attached to it. And, and again, those costs are, you know, only as good as the most recent estimate, of course. Um, so we would be able to examine that list collectively and say, okay, you know, what are likely to be. Essentially deferred costs rather than true scope reductions.
So would it essentially say in the event that?
No, no, you're gonna put a warrant article forward that you can always not.
Not use. Oh, you.
Yeah, so.
And that's lower. You can put in a number that you can lower, so you'll have options, but if you miss the January fourth. Right, if you miss that January fourth piece, then you have no option.
So that's why we're, if, if the order of operations just really stinks for us, it's not the right.
Can always withdraw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Always, oh, yeah, and I have, yeah, I mean, if I would love to never have to go up there and present that. That would be everyone.
Well, since it wasn't on the agenda, so, but I think, let's, you know, we'll do, we'll have this discussion on the twentieth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's.
And then.
That's helpful.
All right.
Good luck on the fifteenth, fifteenth.
Thanks. We're ready, right, Court?
It'll be a quick meeting?
Oh, yeah.
They always are. Need some candy for that?
I assure you, I'm eating chocolate. All right, now we get to the main event. Ready? Over to you, Bob.
So I'm gonna project this time.
But graduating. Okay, so we ready?
Ready.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna walk through the CPS budget. Um, it's similar in format to uh how we looked at the regional budget. Um, it's just an expenditure budget. We don't have the assessments here. Um, so I'm just gonna dive right in. Everybody's seen the first three slides. I'm gonna skip those. That's okay.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. So this is a um top level view of um of the district year over year changes. And see, um, again, at the DESI one thousand function level that uh. Significant portion of the increase comes from teaching and instructional support. Where we do want our dollars to go. Um, we also have an increase in um other school services. We'll talk about that. And we have a decrease in fixed charges. I'll walk through that. And the out of district tuitions is looks a little distorted. I'll explain that too, because it has the the gross charges net of offsets. Um, so the the baseline number makes it look um a little bit off. But again, I'll I'll walk through uh each of these items. Um, but just at a high level, the the big contributors are the teaching and instructional support. The other school services and the out of district tuitions with an offset in the fixed charges. So the teaching instructional support is a one point six million dollar increase. That's four point eight percent over last year's budget. So looking at at lines that are not the CTA uh first, um three hundred nineteen thousand of that is for support staff. Uh, it's a five point six FTE increase for special ed tutors and assistants to meet student needs. Uh, that also includes the contact contractual increases. Uh, those are in our intensive programs uh where those additions are uh and those were. Things that have occurred during this year. Um, there was an effort to kind of tighten uh or kind of hold the budget. Um, but we found that um the the needs have kind of expanded beyond um what we um were anticipating and. These changes, uh these additions needed needed to occur. Uh, to support our students. Supplies and materials increased seventy eight percent. That's somewhat reflective of the inflation in that um area. We talked about that earlier. Um, but five point eight percent, I guess, you know, kind of in relative to other districts, I feel like we um weren't as impacted as some. Um, contract service has a decrease of eighty two thousand. Um, and that is um a shift between having an outsourced uh physical therapist. Versus a um. An in-house uh uh physical therapist. So the contract services line looks like it's down eighty two thousand, but we have an offset in salaries. The CTA piece is the biggest piece of the one point six million. It's it's one million, three hundred forty five thousand or five point five percent. And uh this slide, uh next slide kind of walks through. What that increase is. So. Out of the five point five, half of it is from a cost of living increase, two point seven five. There's also steps and lanes factored in. There's three additional positions, um a B C B A. A physical therapist, which had been uh previously, we we talked about the contracted services piece. Um, this is the offset to that, the salary offset. And then next year, um we have a special education teacher um uh that we're gonna be adding at Sandborn. We have a a cohort of students at the sixth grade that's moving up to the Sandborn building. We don't have a program there to support these students. We're in a single building. Um, you know, this position um could. Probably be of um not one that we would have had to add. The longevity scale in our CTA contract, there's there was disparity between CTA and CCTA. The FY twenty four. In FY twenty four, there was um. That's when some alignment um to bring them into parity is occurring. Um, that's baked into our current CTA contract. So the impact of that is seventy two thousand, seventy two thousand dollar increase. There are retirements factored in, however, some were previously factored into the FY twenty four budget in anticipation of retirement, but not realized. So some of the retirements that we have factored in here, um the savings were already taken. Um, and then we have forty thousand dollar contingency budget, which is an increase of twenty eight versus last year. It, I think, in a zero based budget is helpful to have some contingency. And so forty thousand, I think, is is modest, but we, you know, an effort was made to to increase it from the twelve thousand we had from last year.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Um, uh, let's see, uh, not right now, obviously, but how many people entered longevity in CPS this year?
So can you ask the question again?
Yeah. How many teachers entered into longevity? And then um how many retirements, I said, I I know you said it was factored in. Um, actually retired in at the end of last year. And then one more question exceeding my limit. Um, and then are we factoring in retirements for FY twenty four?
Yes, I can tell you the last one. I know we are. Um, several, uh, but what we know.
Please don't say what.
Yeah, and I can't say any names.
Since we factored it in last, I think we should be transparent that we're, I'm not saying who, but I'm just saying a number. I don't.
Yeah, yeah, I can I can come up with a number. Um, what was assumed last year and what's being assumed this year? Yeah.
Is it sort of steady, like, you know, three, three kind of a thing?
He said, what was your second question? I just I missed it. I'm just trying to.
Um, enter longevity, how many people retired?
Oh, last year. Okay, how many last?
Yeah, thanks. Ballpark, it's three to four this time of year, both years. Um.
And then the actuals like.
Right.
Yeah. I don't know. We, sometimes you can't be, you know, you. There's unanticipated.
This year, we really didn't take any unless we had a name fairly associated with it. Last year, we were less.
I'm kind of asking how.
Risk averse and that proved to be.
And then you can't be on the money, but you know. Are we exceeding every year or are we close to, you know, in our assumptions?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we can. We can look at that. We were less slash less retired than we uh forecasted.
And they didn't, and they didn't all retire where we forecasted it. We did have some ones we didn't expect in May and June, but they weren't where we predicted it. So that's why you're seeing some of the swings.
Yep. Thank you.
Seeing.
On the longevity, I can tell you most of that impact is is from the the actual longevity amounts in the contract.
Oh, yes.
Not from the entering.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, and then some of them might move. You you said entered, but some of them might move from one age group to another. So that's also happening.
I know. Yeah, they move up this.
Yeah.
Lori might uh roll a B C B A, is that a behavioral spending list? And three new positions, um because our needs are going up, even though the numbers are going down a little bit overall. Um, is there any sense of priority order to these three new positions from your perspective?
Uh, we need them all. The B C B A and physical therapists are actually some we've had to juggle this year. So they're not really.
Right.
Debatable. The uh. Special education teacher for seventh and eighth grade next year is really the only one that we haven't had to address this current school year. And it's because of the cohort and the two buildings.
And do you anticipate this is part of a build out that will continue or do you?
Well, you know, I would say we we keep thinking we've built out and then the kids keep coming. So we're in that, you know, perfect storm of how. How wide can we build out before we're at capacity? And I think Debbie's certainly having those discussions with us and the principals right now. Um, almost daily, honestly, because kids' needs are. Really critically in front of us daily at this point. So we're trying to find that sweet spot. Um.
And are we looking at what we're doing in regular classrooms that relate to what we can't do in regular classrooms?
Oh, a hundred percent. Absolutely.
Services.
No question. These are very acute kids that um we are. Working with everyone involved, regular classroom teachers, support staff, special educators, these specialized services. It's a full team effort for sure.
And the PT is not really an add. It's just it's a salary that used to be in contract. We used to contract.
Correct. So it's it's a reallocation.
Right.
We one. Really two FTEs.
We're gonna have a little bit more.
Yeah.
Service you get and the rates you pay for a contractor and the service you get relative to paying staff is you get more for it.
Yeah, agreed. All right, thank you.
Um, in other school services, we're up nine point four percent. Um, this is a. Believe the nurse was also in contract services last year. I'm not sure exactly. Um, when the switch happened, but I know that uh the nurse's salary now, um, it's for a one to one nurse support.
We save some money by hiring our own.
Yes.
Is this elementary or middle?
You probably can't say on that because it's one specific, sorry. Probably, if it's a one on one nurse, sorry.
No, I'm just saying, is the student maybe gonna move out?
Oh, oh, okay. Like out of CPS versus yes.
Not anytime.
Sorry.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Yeah.
Is it an eighth grader or a kindergarten nurse?
I just like to be.
No, I think especially the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, not very many.
Okay, and then we have a bus driver salary increase. There's um that's seven percent. That's also reflective. That's kind of built up. From bottoms up, from looking at the number of routes we have, the number of miles we have. I think there's an additional uh route factor in there that when we looked at uh kind of building the route models. Uh, most of that's contractual increases. We have um a healthy increase there. I guess, you know, given the um. Challenges in finding drivers, this isn't really a surprise and we're still having challenges uh with this, but something we'll continue to work on. Um, case transportation is up eight percent and that's really our allocated cost from case. We'll continue to talk to them and try to get updated guidance as we go. Um. And see if there's any um opportunity there. Um, diesel fuel for the bus fleets reflecting, um, it's about a thirty nine percent increase. Uh, reflects a. It's a significant increase, excuse me, but. Little bit of a drop from current rates. We're seeing um. A little bit of a moderation of gasoline prices that hasn't hit diesel yet.
Right.
So, um, but it's still a big increase. Uh, it's not uh fifty two thousand, it's not small. And thirty seven thousand uh is based on, um, we are seeing, um, you know, with a little bit of an older fleet, some more maintenance is also, um. It's difficult to get parts um in this industry right now and it's kind of at a premium. The suppliers know it. Um, so some of that's price increase, some of that's a little bit of an aging fleet. Um. Not a surprise, I don't think. Uh, maintenance operations is relatively modest, considering we have a fairly uh healthy increase in in utilities of a hundred and nine thousand. Um, we died, got guidance from CMLP. There's um. There's currently a five point nine percent surcharge um. That will stop in January first, um and they projected uh for uh us as a commercial customer. A twenty percent increase on uh January first. So that's factored into our uh into our budget now. Uh, aside from that, we have very modest increases and um we're able to kind of keep this to three and a half percent overall uh by limiting increases in other lines. Uh, the fixed charges, again, this is a. Insurance, uh fifty eight thousand, some of that's lost claims history. Um, some of that I think might be us being broken out um. From the town, um, I we're gonna do a little bit more research on that, but I don't necessarily anticipate it changing. Um, the early retirement and sick time buyout is reduced by one forty town. A lot of those payouts have happened already. Um, as these programs wind down, um, this could reduce further, but um that's a um a significant reduction. And as we don't have programs that we're offering right now, uh that should continue to reduce. Um, so out of district tuitions, you can um it's a two hundred thirty six thousand dollar increase. Um. When we look at this, we we need to look at the gross costs separate from the offsets to to understand it a little bit better. Um. The um. The gross costs are increasing two hundred fifty one thousand or seventeen percent. And that is primarily by the fourteen percent tuition rate increase um from OSD. We have offsets from circuit breaker and IDA that are fairly steady, a modest increase to fifteen thousand. That offsets slightly that two fifty one to arrive at a two thirty six thousand dollar reduction uh increase, excuse me. Um, I wanted to highlight something else too that I saw, um, looking at last year's budget. Um, this is a very uh variable line uh for a lot of reasons. Some of it's driven by students, some of it's driven by. Tuition rates, some of this driven by the timing of offsets. Um, last year in the budget, FY twenty three, it reflected a six hundred and three thousand reduction from the FY twenty two budget. And uh. You know, eight seventy nine thousand net of offsets um to two seventy six thousand net of offsets. So that savings really helped deliver um a a lower increase for CPS last year. Um, and I think um we've we've realized the savings we're gonna get in the budget. From bringing special ed programs in-house, it's it's kind of a different, um, we're in a different place now where we're still avoiding costs. But we're not gonna realize budget savings. Um, we have programs for all the kind of most common things where we'd have enough um. Capacity to have a program. We can't have a one student program, so. So the the next slide kind of illustrates this, and I know, you know, again, this is partly, I think the committee might have uh seen this or be aware of it. But I also know that, um, you know, the towns, when they look at our budget, want to understand this a little bit uh better as well. So we looked at two um. Sample, sample their actual actual in district programs. Um, and didn't want to necessarily name them, but um this is the cost components of the in-house program. Compared to the estimated cost of their outside placement. This is FY twenty two data. Um, you know, the in-house cost is one point one seven nine million. Outside, including tuitions and transportation, two point eight six million. So we're avoiding costs of one point six eight one million by having these programs in-house. It's also better for students to be in their home district. Um, so you know, it's a a win-win. Um. The benefits costs aren't included in the top part and the bottom part doesn't include the fourteen percent increase. So I would say those kind of offset the picture's still the same. We're still avoiding a very large amount of cost by having these programs. Um, and again, I, it's it's best for students um to keep them in district if we can um offer that.
So Bob, quick question on circuit breaker. So if the tuitions do go up fourteen percent in FY twenty four. Um, how would that then impact our next year's circuit breaker?
If they're above the threshold, which they probably are, um, we would get, we would see a a larger um circuit breaker reimbursement.
Okay, so that's.
Everything else being equal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's. Yeah, not terrible news.
No, no, yeah, no, it would, um. Yeah, and.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the way circuit breaker works, right?
It is.
I know, having been with my colleagues, the output of a fourteen percent increase while waiting for the circuit breaker is really paralyzing for some districts, obviously. So I think there's still hope for some more immediate relief or more relief when it finally comes.
Sure.
Okay.
Or comedy.
And they are fully funding this. Um, like when I say fully funding, they typically reimburse circuit breaker at sixty five percent above the threshold. Um, we're in a state right now that is in a cash positive position in the surplus. So, you know, I I anticipate we're gonna get funded in down cycles. You sometimes see lower circuit breaker percentages, which unfortunately we're not in.
Which is good.
Uh, again, this is um, you know, so we looked at it by the the DESI function code view. This is the salary view. Um, and so um the non-salary uh accounts are having a little bit uh more of an impact. But you know, with the bulk of our dollars in salary accounts, thirty six out of the forty three million, um, there's still the four point six. Yields one point seven out of the two point one million. So I'll kind of dive into each of these. Um, that kind of gives you a picture of salary versus non-salary. Um, you know, the big uh contributors in non-salary are out of district tuition. Um, you know, the big uh contributors in non-salary are out of district tuitions. Again, that's net. Uh, energy and utility, I kind of lumped the bus fuel in with the electricity and heating there. I mean, they're all kind of in the same bucket. Um, property liability insurance, um, special education, transportation, and it's offset by that reduction in special education contract services, which. Is in the OT salary, so it's not necessarily a um. A a real savings, it's more of a reallocation of how we're um. How we're supporting students instead of contract services through a staff position. And on the salary account, um, you know, the largest drivers you imagine is teacher salaries for the bulk of our costs are um. A five point seven percent increase. Uh, six hundred eighty-eight thousand of that or two point seven five percent is contractual cost of living increase. Three hundred eighty-six thousand is the additional FTEs, um, the three that we had um highlighted in the instructional, teaching instructional piece plus the one-to-one nurse. Um, longevity increases as well. Um, and the remainder is due to steps and lanes. That's about an additional percent. Uh, the non-teacher salaries are um. Four hundred thirty-four thousand, a three point eight percent increase. Um, there are contractual increases there and additional tutor and assistant positions that are driving that figure. And these are offset by the second retirement program, which is um. Hundred forty-two thousand dollar savings, a fifty-six percent uh decrease.
Yeah, the uh your assistant was somewhere around six.
Five point six, I believe, yeah. Uh, this is a school summary view. I know in the past, um, there's kind of been a detailed drive into each one. Um, I think. To me, it's helpful to look at it this way. The FTEs are really driving these budgets. The um, the non-FTE piece is really kind of embedded in the non-salary numbers that we talked about. Um, so uh this kind of gives you a picture of um across the schools. And um, it's a couple of things I'll comment on um. You know, for, and there's some moving parts here too. When we, when we look at some things, we we make estimates. So Thero, for example, you see a decrease. It had, we had budgeted four sections of kindergarten at Thero and three at Willard. It turned out we had three at Thero and four at Willard, so you have a kindergarten teacher and a. Um, kindergarten assistant at Willard that we didn't budget for. But we had those budgeted at Thero, but they're not in uh next year's. Um, so sometimes you have things that that net off like that. Um, the middle school includes the um, the new special education uh teacher. And um. And the 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 balances, the um. The tutors and assistants in the intensive needs programs. Um, elementary wide is where the nurse is included. And. The district wide includes the OT and um the BCBA.
One thing that might be helpful over time is if we add the actuals, so you can, because what we but. Right now, you're comparing projections in December to projections in December. Maybe the actuals at another point in between would help explain the variance, because there's a lot of moving pieces in those totals. I mean, the biggest.
Another column.
Yeah, another column, and and the big patterns, you can see Thero has more of the intense special programs, so that's accounting for that. Significant difference in staffing. Alcott's building out its intensive program, and it's had less um. And it's been more impacted by enrollment shifts than the other schools. So there's stories to go with a lot of, a lot of the moving pieces.
Oops, skip one. Uh, so I also wanted to provide an SFR funding uh update for CPS. Oh, uh, this highlights the the different grants that have been received and kind of the overall. Spending that's occurred and and really what um we had spending um uh this year and next. Um, you can see the SFR three funding is a lot larger here than it is at uh the regional district. Um. And uh we we do have some remaining ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, IDA funds. That will be utilizing um and a small amount of SFR two uh this year. Those will be complete this year. Uh, SFR three, um, we anticipate spending um the remainder um equally between this year and next year. If there's an opportunity, we'll try to defer some of the summer school um costs that we have budgeted into FY twenty-five, so we have some savings in FY twenty-five. But at this point, I'm not going to project that. If it happens, that will be good news that will factor, but we kind of want to plan conservatively. Um. And the next slide shows more on on what SFR three is specifically being used for.
And just a couple of comments on that. Um, the counselor piece psychologist is going to phase out, so once we consolidate schools. We made that a known entity, so it won't be a cliff we have to solve. Um. Uh, the special ed teacher, the language-based program, that is going to be one we have to wean our way into, so that's the one cliff to watch. Um, summer school, Bob's already mentioned, and then instructional materials is a one-time purchase that we've already started to use, so. Um, we're we're holding to the plan, which I think feels good that all that work last. A year or so ago of getting input and really looking at what our needs were and our objectives is have held really solidly.
The counseling business, assuming that at Sanborn or the new middle school, there is an existing team in place. Like an existing psychology counseling team.
Yeah, so yes, yeah, it's it's a master view of the six through eight. Uh, resources that we have, and right now the duplicity is because of the two schools essentially, and and the needs of the kids, don't get me wrong. But um, once we're in one building, it'll be easier.
So does this fully consume the SFR funds?
Yeah, this would, this will. This is how we plan to use it and um how we are using it. Um. The three seventy-two for the summer school, if we can preserve some of that, like, you know, if we get to the end of the year and. There's potentially money in the budget, maybe we we put some of that back in the general fund so we can preserve some and. Have a budget offset in FY twenty-five, but uh that would be the hope. Uh, you know, I don't know. We'll see whether that's possible or not. Um. But the rest of those are being utilized um and will be spent down. Uh, well, they they all will, but again, the summer school is the one that we could potentially preserve, because. That occurs in July and August, and the deadline for the grant is September thirty.
Is there any indication of future, like, SFR-like grants?
There's an indication there won't be. See leaves I'm getting to plan ahead, use it for one-time costs, and if you didn't start mitigating that now, and. Um, yeah, I don't think. I think it's going to be a focus on other revenue streams that at least my college, the superintendent's association's looking at special ed being the focus. Primarily, but chapter seventy, still making sure Student Opportunity Act is fully optimized the way that was intended. I wouldn't be surprised if chapter seventy-one with regional transportation doesn't get some attention. The rural districts are in great need of that being looked at, so. I think it's going to come from other directions, the the focus from the legislators and others.
So are there any other questions?
No.
Some to follow, I'm sure. Once again, though, nice uh.
Thank you very much.
Nice work studying this together.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank too, again, the principals and the administrative team, department heads who put a lot of work into it. Not sure that's why they sign up to be educators, but um it's something that uh is helpful to us in building.
Many of us do that because it has to go with the parts we like, and you you folks in that office do it because you like the money.
So, but yeah.
No, thank you, Bob. Big endeavor, especially the first time through and.
So we're looking at three point three recommendation from the Concord FinCom.
Yes.
Uh, so I'll ask the unpleasant question. Um, have you looked at the delta?
Yes.
Because it's going to come up sometime.
Yeah, no, of course we have, yeah.
So I I mean, I think what we, you know, we certainly looked at it, and this wasn't the first uh. Number we came up with, and we um felt like we were at a point where we needed to, we we didn't. Don't get me wrong, but we didn't, we didn't touch really um the impact to students, and we felt like we we should explain where we are. Um, and and let folks absorb that rather than making cuts that are gonna um have. Impact. Um, so we are where we are, and we'll we'll have discussions with all constituents and. Go from there.
More to talk on.
Yeah. There's a lot of pressures happening at the same time on the that you that are kind of reflected in the CPS budget.
I guess one thing I feel the need to say, we took a lot, and I've I've said it before, but probably it's a good moment to say it again. We took a considerable amount of risks in the zero-based CPS budget a year ago. And several of them panned out in the wrong direction, and we had bottomed out contingencies and other things, and. Um, some of what the increase is here is recuperating from that, because we've had to, you know, really. Look hard at what we're doing this year, which. It's the tightest CPS budget I've ever run, and um and needs of kids exploding at the same time has been a real tricky spot, so. Um, we felt compelled to bring you the educationally sound budget for all kids, and we will have conversations from there.
The town also may have more chapter seventy revenue that doesn't get factored into our budget, um, but I think there's been a healthy increases in chapter seventy funding for a lot of districts, I think, including uh Concord, so but we. Uh, we're told that the state's going to be late in projecting chapter seventy because of the change in administration. We are giving, they're giving. School districts tools to project on their own, so we're going to attend a webinar and hopefully be able to project where they'll.
It would be helpful also to get, how how much are their healthcare costs going up? For our teachers like ours are.
Oh, for the town?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So we have to understand that they're under many of the same pressures that we are in terms of uh employment benefits, right?
Right.
Yep.
So is the next step, the December twentieth public hearing? That's the next?
And then if you're ready to vote, you'd vote. Otherwise, we'd go into January third.
We have to have a number by January thirty. It could go down. Hmm, it can go down, but we haven't.
Right, we need a a number for January third, that's correct, yeah.
So, right.
Doesn't have to be the number, but it can't go up, yes.
That in the bylaws, town bylaws.
Uh, I don't, is it a legal MGL thing? I don't know. I've got has moderator. That's always been the way it's gone.
I have my hand up.
Ms. Briggs.
Oh, um, all right, I was, okay, I'll 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 acknowledge you, Peggy.
I I just want to let you know that um we are listening. We're in here and uh appreciate the hard work you're doing. Um. Uh, so that was my main comment. I just mentioned the cost can't go up. Uh, that's up to the moderator. The budget has to be within the scope of the article, so usually uh it can't go up once it's in the article and the motion. You know, could go down a bit, but. Well, I I have been working with all of you uh. Hard to believe we're moving on to regular town meeting. After so much effort on the special town meeting, uh, but uh thank you all. I do want to let you know, uh, you know, myself and Parrish are. Some of the other finance committee members are staying and appreciating all you're doing. Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy.
Thanks, Peggy.
Anyone else with questions on the budget before we move to the capital plan?
Well, I just have a comment. I did ask you a question about the electrical bids.
Oh, yes.
And I I'm just gonna say, I made a mistake last year in not getting enough detail on the capital plan. Um, so I just. I'm going to ask perhaps if we could maybe get a little more information. I'd like to see the full scope of the electrical work at Ripley and understand it. So if you want to go ahead and vote tonight, I'll I'll probably abstain, but it's up to you, the chair, so.
Okay, um. So refresh my memory one more time about.
Just the bids for the electrical work that's.
Bids for the electrical work at Ripley.
Correct, which is the main component.
Which is the seven hundred and forty.
Yes.
Um, I apologize.
No, don't, it's fine.
I apologize.
It's not, it's sorry.
Fine, I I didn't ask.
We, and I should have followed up, and I forgot.
And you're, I'm sorry. Anyway, I apologize. So hmm, maybe we could. Um, at some point or to get those um, the detail of that seven hundred and forty-five thousand, like the breakouts.
I think we have an invitation for bid. I can check.
And just the like how it fits into the total project. I know it's a big project, you know, with the heat pumps and everything, and. It's been going on for a little while, right?
Yeah, this is essentially, I'm gonna say that I don't know what I'm talking about. It's the electrical upgrade we need to do to be able to use the heat pumps and.
Understood, I just get a little more detail on it.
Okay.
And so this is the conclusion of that. Work. This this last, is that right?
Correct me when I get it wrong, but.
Are we done with the budget presentation?
Yes, yeah, we're done with that. Um, so what it will do is set you to, you know. You'll be able to do the heat pumps on the pods we've planned and benefit from the Green Communities Grant. It will set a readiness for other parts of the building. So the infrastructure is there to look at electrifying other spaces at Ripley.
At Ripley.
Yes.
So if we could just tell that story in a little more detail, I think that would call to the public.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Is that context that would benefit you for decision-making around?
Oh, I I I just want to be like transf- I I don't think I'm going to change, it's not going to affect my decision. I just like to be clear about things with.
So would everybody be comfortable doing this on the twentieth, um, when we have all of those pieces in place?
Is there any?
I think the only ask is we get all of your questions in the next few days, so.
That's really the scope, not miss anything. If your, if my question's not clear, let me know.
Yeah.
All right.
So it's the scope of the work in Ripley, the electrical work in Ripley.
The and then the how the whole thing fits together with we bought, you know, heat pumps and whenever they're sitting there someplace, and now we need to do the electrical work. And also that it will provide infrastructure for for further electrocute, lack that word.
Electrocution.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we can get you more detail.
Thank, that would be great. Thank you very much. All right.
One of my questions on the. Ripley is, is there like a bigger picture vision for Ripley? Because it's a lot of money on. An older building, so I'm just curious, what is the big, and you don't have to answer this right now, but is there like a broader vision for what we do with this building?
I mean, I'll answer what I know for information, uh, you know. The children's center is going to move out, so the town's going to have supervision and decision-making of that. The talk has been they have their own program needs and will probably move here. Preschool, if we had a way to do something different, we might, but we don't. The schools are full, so. This is very um effective in terms of service provision for children, to to have them all here and collectively together, so I think that's. Uh, I don't see a way you're going to do anything any differently with the preschool. Um, certainly, the central office has no other home, so the the schools don't have any fluid space at this point. The middle school won't, so I think you're in. At least from the foreseeable future, Ripley's probably fairly status quo, which. Was the driving reason to start doing some work here so that uh things are both efficient, more efficient. Fresher, you know, rugs, things like that, but safe as well, which is the sidewalks and the paving, so it's just been a long time. Since anything has been done here.
Oh, I love that theater.
Got shabby.
It was very shabby, but yes.
Congress Children's Center plays. I mean, I speak only for myself, but I think that's where I see Ripley at this point. I don't think you have a lot of other options to look at what you do differently, so.
I mean, it's also a big number. Place to test out sustainability in a smaller setting as opposed to a big school.
I mean, this room has a heat pump on it, and I'll tell you right now, it is not a, not an efficient. Space. It's very hard to regulate the temperature in here. We've gone out, no, I've been in here twice, you know, hours and hours today. This morning, we were chilled right to the bone, and then it got so hot, Mark had the doors open, so. It's it's an interesting space that um probably has its ups and downs, yeah, but.
We'll find out.
You know, it's a big number, yeah. I think too, let me name one of the biggest assets here, Ripley, the steam lab that's here. Is a shining star of this school district in many ways. It's amazing and um fantastic, and this little, you know, in-house. Field trip we do, and they come over here and it's all active. Kristen will take it from there, but um that is an important. active. Kristen will take it from there, but that is an important shining gem of this building right now. And it brings kids over here, which is even better. Yeah, it's really, really engaging and incredibly effective in terms of instruction and pedagogy. So, all right.
Great question, though, Carrie. I think as we spend considerable funds.
All right. So if we have questions on the capital plan, we have yours all queued up now. Just get them sooner rather than later so we can have like a wrap-up on the twentieth, and we'll pop it to that agenda. All right.
And I'm assuming you don't have any other big moving parts here that you know of now that is going to necessitate a change in the next two weeks. I mean, there may be some changes, but.
My budget or cap?
Yeah. I mean, I didn't assume as much.
Any.
Sure. Thank you.
Good answer, Bob. Been a lot to get to where we are today.
Well, and thank you. I know it's a lot of work and you're new and we appreciate it.
And you've had to do it twice.
Yeah.
I just do it three times.
Nope. I guess it isn't. Well, with that, if we're going to talk capital plan next week, I think I would move to a turn this meeting. And thank you guys all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.